Where's Angel?
Good afternoon and welcome to the Volusia County School Board Meeting on June 27, 2023. It is now 4:33 PM. I'm calling this meeting to order. In just a moment, I'm going to ask you to join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. The Pledge of Allegiance this afternoon will be presented by Forest Lake Elementary and the National Anthem will be by Spruce Creek High School. Following that, we will have a moment of reflection and a moment of silence and reflection. So at this time, would you please join me by standing for the pledge? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Virginia Freeman, the Principal of Forest Lake Elementary, and this is our wonderful pre-plate class run by Ms. Bradshaw. Ms. Bradshaw, let's do the pledge. Okay, ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, I'm Ms. Crawford. We are Spruce Creek High School. This is the Creek Choir presenting the National Anthem.
Thank you. You may be seated. We welcome all of you that are here in the audience with us or listening at home. I'm going to start by introducing those that are here with me. I'm actually going to start over on the right-hand side. My far right, I have Mrs. Celeste Gilmore. She is our Agency Clerk. Then we have Mr. Ruben Cologne representing District Five. Mrs. Anita Burnett, our Vice Chair, representing District Two. We have our Superintendent, Dr. Carmen Balgobin. Now to my far left, I have Mr. Carl Persis representing District Four. Mrs. Jessie Thompson representing District Three. Our School Board Attorney, Mr. Aaron Wolf. And I am Jamie Haynes representing District One and your Chair this year. Items for approval on this agenda are items 1.03, 2.02, 4.01, 7.02, and 18.01. Public participation times for items on the consent agenda. You may choose to put in for public participation. At 6:00 PM, we will, or shortly thereafter, we will do items of general interest pertaining to public education in Volusia County. For a total of up to 15 minutes will be provided for public comment at this time. Time will be provided for public comment on any action item before a board vote is called on that item. Time will also be provided at the end of the meeting for public comment for items of general interest pertaining to public education in Volusia County before items from the Board, Superintendent, or Attorney are open for discussion, announcement, or approval. Each speaker will have a total of three minutes to speak. Please respect the time clock. We have a time clock that you can view, and we ask that when the three minutes are up and the buzzer goes off that you please stop. No signs, placards, or other visual forms of communication are authorized except as part of an individual speaker's presentation. Speakers shall not engage in personal attacks, abusive language, or other conduct which interferes with the conduct of this meeting. I, as the Chair, have the right to terminate any speaker's privilege to address the Board if this rule is violated. Members of the audience should be courteous to all speakers and shall refrain from making audible comments or applauding during the meeting. We've learned to use the jazz hands. They're quiet, and it shows that you agree. At this time, we're moving into item 1.02, our District Vision Statement and Board Member Comments. Do I have a board member that would like to start today? Because our mission, our vision statement is to create lifelong learners prepared for an ever-changing global society. Mr. Cologne.
Greetings, everyone, and thank you all for joining us on this amazing summer School Board Meeting. These are always exciting because the folks who really want to be here are ready to go home, and that's amazing. I have had the pleasure of the last two days of joining Deltona High as they present at the Model Schools Conference in Orlando. And not only am I proud of the work that they've presented in their path to greatness, to improving what ultimately is a reflection on the entire community, but it was really, really interesting and fun to watch how amongst the 5,000, and I had no idea how many people would be there. I'd never been to this conference. There were 5,000 people there, and of the high schools from across the country, there were about eight or nine, 10 or so schools that were invited to present at this conference, and Deltona High was one of them. First day, their presentation was really, really good, but today, they were on the big stage. Today, you know, mind you, they tell you what room it is, and you assume that all the rooms are the same. We got into a room, and there were just folks in there from all over the place, big stage, big screens, and it was an honor and pleasure to watch Principal McCalliff, Dr. Lapnow, as well as Alicia Zarbrough speak about the accomplishments and how they took Deltona High from 76% graduation rate in 2017 to what is expected to be a 99% graduation rate this coming year. So, super excited about that, and I'm sure they'll be back here to tell us all about it, should we invite them, so.
They have their vans on? Did everybody?
You know, the Principal did have his vans on. I didn't wear mine.
All right, good. I was just, I was just checking.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was, it was amazing. And again, to see in a world stage, to see all these schools come together, just to hear what is going on here in Volusia County, that was super exciting. So, I'm still on cloud nine, and thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson. So I just wanted to give a shout out to all of the staff and principals who have been going to the job fairs that we've been having. I went to one at Mainland, and it is the summer, as we know, and there were so many people there, not only from our district, but also I was very impressed by how many people came out and were filling out applications while they were there and holding amazing interviews. So just thank you to the team that's put that together and for everyone who's spending their summer doing that and making sure that we have the best possible people working here in Volusia County. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Persis.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I want to thank Dr. Balgobin, you, Madam Chair, Jessie, you were able to get out to the groundbreaking that we had this morning for the new Tamoka Elementary School, and it was, it was great to see the, I think, the whole elected body of the city of Ormond Beach was there, the police chief was there, the fire chief was there, the president of the Chamber of Commerce was there, the executive director of the chamber was there, and just a whole lot of other people that just wanted to be there because that school has been there for 55 years, and they're finally going to get a brand-new school. And as we were all there speaking and, you know, shoveling, they, to see those, those derricks and everything behind us, you know, just tearing down the buildings. I mean, tearing down the buildings as we're there, just, you know, talking to the crowd. It's, it's amazing. It was, it was an amazing sight, and I was particularly thrilled to see an employee there in the crowd who was there when I was there, and she had been there, Pam Lauer is her name, and she'd been working at Tamoka for 35 years. So I was just, you know, it just made me feel good to see that and see all that support from that community. Thank you again, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Burnett.
Thank you. I had had, one of my planned comments was to, to thank the Human Resources Team as well, because I know that they're out there trying to make sure that we're ready for first-day school, so thank you for that. But I get to see my friends from Atlantic here celebrating some champions in, in the audience, so excited about that. And I'm going to give Ms. Hein, Coach Heinlein a shout out, too, because I know she made top shelf, or top, is it top coach of the, top coach of the year award for the girls' weightlifting. And I know that's, that's really one of her passions, and she's worked hard to get everybody there, so, great job. Thanks.
Thank you. So, I have to say, there's been a lot going on since we were here last time, believe it or not, because they've talked, they've touched on quite a few of the things that we've had going on. But some of the other things that some of us have participated in is, right after the last board meeting, we had the Pace Center for Girls breakfast. And for those of you that don't know, the Pace Center for Girls is one of our schools here in Volusia County that actually meets a need, and it's a need for young ladies that may be struggling in the regular school setting, and they're able to go there. And one of the most heartwarming speeches this year, because Mr. Persis was there with me, was what the young lady that, you know, she graduated back in, what, was it 2005? Or something like that? And she told the, what she learned during that time and how she uses it still to today. And she and her husband have not only had two children, they actually fostered and adopted two children because, and she said that would have never happened in her life where she could have had that opportunity to take two children and devote time to them had she herself not been supported at the Pace Center. And it was hard not to cry during that, like, to hear her story because it was.
What do they call it? The Bridges?
The Bridges.
The Bridges Speech, or?
Yes. So they give a speech with, here's where I started, and I've crossed the bridge, and you too can, and this is what can happen. And that was a great thing. And then Mr. Cologne decided to join me later that evening over at the Elks Lodge here in Deland, because that's where Deland Middle School and Deland High hold their FFA musical bingo. And I have to tell you, if you've never been to musical bingo, it's a lot of fun. He brought his wife along, and we had a great time. I think she and I maybe were a little more into it than what he was, but he did snap pictures and, you know, capture some of the songs that were being played. But that's a fundraiser for our FFA group, and that segues into, last week was the FFA Conference down in Orlando. And I really will tell you, the FFA program across the state of Florida is outgrowing the convention center where they have been meeting. On the final day, they had over 6,000 people in the conference auditorium for the presentations because so many students are becoming involved in FFA, and we've got wonderful FFA programs here in Volusia County. We are so fortunate that we have so many young men and young women that in school have stepped up. And in, and I will tell you, Deland High took some outstanding awards, Deland Middle did, Pine Ridge High. We had a young man from University High that finished his American College degree already, but we did have a couple things that had never happened before. We had a young lady at Deland Middle that won the Star Award. Her name is Mia. And if you, all of it was livestreamed, and if you go back and just watch the little video clip, which I think our principal from, Mr. DeVito, got it, her mother and father are standing up there with her with no idea, and I think her mom was maybe even more, like, shocked and surprised than what Mia was. But we actually, it's been, I think, 73 years since Volusia County has been represented at the state level with having a student or a graduating student serve on the FFA State Board. And we have Mackenzie Cunningham, who just graduated from Deland High, and she is representing Volusia County on the State Board for this next year. She's taking a gap year because she already did her dual enrollment to represent us, and that's such an honor. I mean, it's only seven individuals that are chosen to have that honor, and for Volusia County to be represented, and Mackenzie, she's going to do a great job. And it was nice to see her have to give up her Deland jacket, but put on her state jacket. There was a lot of people there to see that. But really, the awards that were given out to those young men and young women are so deserving. And you may have just one idea of what FFA is, but you really need to understand, there's a lot of areas it covers, and it's really preparing our kids for wonderful choices. And I will tell you, I've heard that the Seabreeze High Group that just, you know, came back to life this year.
It's getting started.
I heard they may have a waiting list already for next year because so many kids want in on that. But I did a few other things. As board members, we'll be having the Audit Committee come before us in the near future because we have finished a couple more audits, internal audits, and we've met on that. But I also took a trip to Haynes City with Dr. Earl Johnson, Tom Brown, and Ron Young, and we went down and looked at a school that's being built there right now and just how they have model plans to work, like, smarter and streamline things, and I was very impressed. Yes, we were out in the heat doing this because we were three days away from the air being turned on, but it's 1,602 student stations built on 17 acres. And these guys may want to throw something at me, but some of us know that we've had issues with, like, parent pickup and drop-off loops. Well, they designed this school so it has a mile and a half parent pickup, drop-off loop, so it's net, the traffic is never out on the street, and the bus loop can stack 30 buses and load five at a time undercover. And like, those are the things we need to think smarter about, and so it was a good trip for us to do that. But there's just a lot of things going on, but we are headed towards the Fourth of July holiday time period, and I'm hoping everybody gets a little bit of time off and gets to do some fun things with their family. I'm hoping to spend some time with my three little grandchildren, if I can make that happy, because FaceTime just is not the same with little people. But, Dr. Balgobin, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, ma'am. I, when, when I do my announcements, I will at that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we're moving on to item 1.03, Approval of Minutes. Board members, you've seen the minutes for the June 13 workshop and work session. Do I have anyone that would like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
I move approval of the minutes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second that.
All right, so Mr. Persis has made the motion to approve the minutes from the June 13 workshop and the meeting, and Ms. Thompson has seconded any discussion. All right, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes unanimously. At this time, we're moving on to item 2.01, Agenda Changes. Dr. Balgobin, are there any agenda changes before the agenda is presented to the Board for approval?
Yes, Madam Chair, there is one item, 11.06. I'm asking if we can pull this item, and we will determine if there will be a need for a future board meeting to place this item on.
All right. Board members, you've heard Dr. Balgobin's recommendation to pull item 11.06, and they will determine if it needs to be placed back on at a later date. Any discussion? Or do I have a motion to approve the agenda minus the item 11.06?
Move to approve as amended.
Thank you, Mrs. Burnett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Any discussion? All right, then at this time, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the agenda with the amended item of 11.06 being pulled, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Now we're moving on to item 3.01. Dr. Balgobin, it's your turn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members, members of the audience, those of you who are listening at home, good afternoon to each and every one of you, and we do have a few items that I'd like to share with you this, this afternoon. So a couple of things. Social Studies. You've probably seen some of this announced on our social media, but for our Social Studies Teacher of the Year, we had 32 total nominees. Out of the 32 nominees, there is the winner for elementary, and that is Natasha Guidry from Discovery Elementary. So congratulations, Natasha. For our middle school, it's Wendy Gifford, and Wendy Gifford is from River Springs Middle School. And for the, for the high school, for the high school, it's, I guess you know already, it's the Land High School, Dr. Lindsay Berkman. So congratulations to these three individuals who were nominated as the Social Studies Elementary, Middle, and High School Teacher of the Year. Middle and High Social Studies Beginning Teachers of the Year. We have selected, or they've been selected, Ms. Terion Kendrick from Campbell Middle School and Shelby Radford from Deland High School, and these are the Beginning Teachers of the Year. They're Beginning Teachers, but they are outstanding in what they do, and they have been selected for Middle and High. Math, 24 nominees we've had for math, and the Volusia County Council for Teachers of Math announced the 22, 23 Math Teachers of the Year. Ashley Hatch from Pride Elementary was selected as the elementary teacher. Kirsten Perkey from Ormond Beach Middle, and Courtney Peo from Deland High School. So Deland, I'm hearing a lot of Deland High School here, Chair. I just want to say thank you to all of these, these teachers. You are a representation of all 8,700 staff members that we have in our county. Thank you for all that you do on a daily basis. NEFTI, I think many of you were there when we had our pitch at the Deltona Center a few months back. So from University High School, Abby Young. Abby was selected to participate in, in October, pretty much coming up, October 2, 2023, for NEFTI as a part of the national competition, and Abby will be in New York City. Abby was already selected as the winner for our district finals and recently participated also in the regional competition in Miami where Abby won. Her business pitch was in the top quartile of that competition. That is a big deal. And she will have the opportunity now to participate, not only in the Startup Summer Program that comes with a $1,000 check, a stipend, and also a $500 investment, business investment recognition and dollars. a stipend, and also a $500 investment, business investment recognition and dollars assigned to that. So congratulations to Abby. Our FFA, I know you mentioned this, Chair, but I have to again because I'm so proud of these two young ladies. Mia Portillo, you said, you mentioned her name from Deland Middle School. She won the State of Florida FFA Star Discovery Award. And our very own Mackenzie Cunningham. Mackenzie from Deland High School, she was seated as Vice President, as you stated, for Area 3. And she's such an impressive young lady. We've seen her here in our boardroom. So I just wanted to make sure that her parents and all her family members, along with these two individuals, these two wonderful students, that they hear our heartfelt congratulations to each of them and also their families. And last but not least, next Tuesday, next Tuesday is?
July 4.
Of July. And I hope that everyone will have a wonderful Fourth of July next week, next Tuesday. Please enjoy the day off with your families, with your friends, as we celebrate something grand that makes us very special in this country, which is our independence. So congratulations to our entire team and I hope you have a fabulous day. And Chair, you had asked for us to do a little bit of research.
Yes. So I think this is a perfect time to bring it up. I, prior to being on the board, I was a 12-month employee here in Volusia County Schools at one point in my career. And when I started out as a 12-month employee board, we had some holidays off that we lost. And so when I finished being a 12-month employee, we had less holidays off than what we used to have, okay, for 12-month employees. 10-month and 11-month, nine-month employees were having those holidays, but not 12-month. So I had asked Dr. Balgobin if we could take a look at other districts, specifically our surrounding districts here in Volusia County, to see what holidays they allowed for our 12-month employees. And one of those that kind of stuck with me is the Fourth of July. Because it used to be years ago, as 12-month employees, we would work, once we went to the four-day work, we would work four eights instead of four tens. Well, then we lost that as a holiday and we started working four tens. So I asked her if they could look into it and if we could have a discussion about that.
Absolutely. And we did. So I would like to call Mr. West and Ms. Hazel to join us because we did look at some neighboring counties and we have our findings and I would like for them to share with you and the board.
So, good afternoon. Thank you very much for this opportunity to come before you and talk. We did do a little bit of research on this. Currently, our district, Volusia County Schools, has nine paid holidays. And for our 12-month employees specifically. So when we started looking at other districts, we wanted to compare and look apples to apples. And districts range from 10 to 14 days of paid holidays. So what Dr. Balgobin had asked us to do is research those that are, are the ones that are, I'll say, most looked at, particularly at national holidays such as July the Fourth, President's Day, and Veterans Day, and make that recommendation to see what we could do as far as adjusting our calendars. It will be no financial impact to the district, but it will actually recognize those days for our 12-month employees.
So board members, I also know that one of them, and you know, we've had discussion about this because one year that was a day where we brought students in and we were like, why did this happen on the calendar, is like the President's Day. And so, you know, part of what's happening is we're saying to our 12-month, we're saying to everybody else, you can have that as a holiday. But we've been telling our 12-month employees, know that you have to work it. And you have to work it by doing four tens typically when this happens. And, you know, Fourth of July is a national holiday. And my thought is, why are we having people work a 40-hour work week on that week by doing four tens when we used to do four eights and we allowed them to have the holiday? So I appreciate you looking into it. And as you've heard, we only have nine and everybody surrounding us has 10 to 14. So anybody have anything they'd like to, you know, ask about that or say about that? I think our staff deserves some additional holidays off.
I agree. I mean, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah, thank you. Now you've explained it that way. It made no sense before that we give you the week off and then we make you work four tens in order to get the Fourth of July off. That really makes no sense. And so I am supportive of this. So in order to make this happen though, because we just approved the calendar two weeks ago, wasn't it?
Well, so there's several different calendars. There's the student calendar, which governs that work, and that's decided on by the Calendar Committee. And then this, we're talking about the work calendar that comes through payroll. And yes, you did just approve that.
So that would have to come before us again?
I think we can.
That's organizational.
Okay. So then we don't have to, so yay?
Can we just?
Really is not.
Yeah. Can we make this happen? And would it take effect like right away so that the employees next week can have?
So, Dr. Balgobin?
It's up to Dr. Balgobin.
It's up to her.
It's organizational.
But Dr. Balgobin?
Do we have any principals in the house?
I see Jason Watson there.
I'm being honest.
I think that.
Can we get a motion and a second from the crowd?
I think the 12-month employees are doing this.
All right, ladies and gentlemen.
It just.
It makes sense.
Madam Superintendent?
Some of us have been around long enough that we watched this happen. You were like me, you know? We had it and then it got taken away. And I was like, why did we lose that holiday when it's a national holiday? So, you know, I thank you for looking into this and you hear that we're hoping that you'll make a great organizational decision.
How many 12-months we have in here with your, just your hands, let me see? I think this was a setup. Well, I will tell you, Madam Chair and board members, thank you for asking to do this research because you're absolutely right. In every other counties that I've served, these are days that were pretty much, you didn't have to make up the hours or take the time off. And I think that definitely we need to be in alignment with our neighboring districts. So I will share this with you. This is fine with us here in being able, and we can pull this off, guys. You can clap. Remember, you have to do this. We can pull this off for next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay?
Oh.
So we will send an announcement out tomorrow, Madam Chair and boards, to all employees.
So if we've got Fourth of July, what other days are we looking at?
I think to be consistent.
Just to be clear, because we have some questions in the back coming. So that means next week for 12-month employees, Monday would be an eight-hour day, Tuesday's the Fourth, so it would be off?
No.
No?
No.
Monday's an eight-hour day, Tuesday's the Fourth, it would be off, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday are eight-hour days because we have summer school going too.
So you're actually getting your holiday as a true holiday, not making it up by working 10-hour days?
And then we go back to the 10-hour days the next week. Okay.
There are other, are there other holidays?
The other two that I think that would be very appropriate and it will be in alignment with our neighboring district would be Veteran Days and President Day.
Yes. Because, please. Okay, so how does?
That's good.
I love it.
I love it.
Because, I mean, President's Day needs to be off and it's really hard when a lot of our 12-month employees have children and their children are off, and then they have to come to work and they have to figure out what to do with their children. It's a national holiday. Everybody else is off. So, all right. Thank you, Dr. Balgobin.
Absolutely. Thank you, board. Thank you, board, for your support on this. Ms. Hazel, we will send out an announcement tomorrow to all of our employees. Thank you. And Madam Chair, that's it for announcements.
All right. You guys did that homework quickly.
I'll tell you, these 12-month employees are going to be showing up even more and more today.
All right. We're moving right along to item 4.01, which is Administrative Appointments and Transfers. And Dr. Balgobin, I'll let you start.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members, members of the audience. We do have seven appointments today. But before we begin our countdown, I would like to ask Ms. Vidalis Camacho, and I believe she is here, she is, to please join us. Because at our last board meeting, Ms. Camacho was a recommendation that I am very thankful that each of you approved. And unfortunately, she was out. But just to share a little bit with you and to give her an opportunity to say a few words to each and every one of you and members of the audience and her community that she'll be serving. She has began with us here in Volusia County in 2005. And she started at Friendship Elementary. Ms. Camacho earned her bachelor's degree and her master's degree from Stetson University. She holds certification in English of Speakers of Other Languages, Elementary Education and Ed Leadership. Her extensive background includes a range of roles from being an ESOL teacher to a reading teacher to a math intervention teacher, instructional support TOA, academic coach, and administrative TOA. After her TOA position, she became the Assistant Principal at one of your very own Citrus Grove Elementary and then went on to serving at Freedom Elementary. She just also completed her Principal Preparation Program. And because the board approved her appointment on June 13, her effective date, start date, as you know, will be July 3 for her new position. But Ms. Camacho, we wanted to give you an opportunity to just share a few words here with the board, members of the audience, and the community that you will be serving.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, esteemed board members and Superintendent Balgobin. It is with great honor and a sense of joy that I sit before you today as I accept the position of Principal of McGinnis Elementary. This appointment feels like a homecoming for me as I had the privilege of working at McGinnis back in 2013. Serving as the Principal of McGinnis has been a goal of mine for several years, and I am eager to rejoin the Bobcat family, a community that holds a special place in my heart. I am proud to share that I am a product of Volusia County Schools myself, having graduated from Deltona High School in 2000. The education I received from this district laid the foundation for my journey as an educator and has instilled in me a deep sense of gratitude and a desire to give back. I bring with me a wealth of experience within Volusia County Schools, having worked in this district since 2005. Over the past six years, I have had the privilege of serving as an Assistant Principal with my most recent assignment at Freedom Elementary for the past year. Prior to that, I served as the Assistant Principal of Citrus Grove Elementary for five years. The support, collaboration, and dedication of these incredible communities have played a pivotal role in preparing me for the journey ahead. Thank you to Dr. Narig and to my Freedom family. From the moment I walked through the doors of Freedom Elementary, I was welcomed with open arms and together we accomplished so much. Freedom is an incredible community of dedicated educators and staff, and I have no doubt that you will continue to soar to new heights. I would be remiss if I did not take a moment to express my gratitude to my greatest mentor, Jennifer Williams. Ms. Williams, your guidance, support, and belief in me have been instrumental in my professional growth. You have opened doors of opportunity and consistently pushed me to my potential, even when I doubted myself. Your mentorship has shaped me into the leader I am today, and I am forever grateful. I also want to extend my heartfelt appreciation to my husband, Armando, for being a source, a constant source of strength in my life. Your unwavering support, endless encouragement, and willingness to bring me coffee when I needed the most have meant the world to me. To my dear children, Adriana, Armando, and Mia, thank you for always serving as my driving force. May my appointment as Principal of McGinnis serve as a reminder to always set your sights high, work diligently, and never stop pursuing your dreams. As I step into this role, I want to assure you that I have the spirit, resilience, and heart to always do my best for not only the students and staff at McGinnis Elementary, but also the Dillion Springs community in which I reside in. I am proud to be a McGinnis Bobcat where I will always do my Bobcat best.
So we need you to stay until after we do all of the appointments and then we're going to have everyone come up and we'll get photos. And we are happy to hear from you this week. All right, Dr. Balgobin?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I will continue. So our very first for this board meeting is Dr. Tamira Baker-Dreighton. And I want to tell you a little bit about Dr. Dreighton. She couldn't be with us here today in person because she had a prior commitment, but will be at the next board meeting. Just a little bit about Dr. Dreighton. She's earned her Bachelor's Degree in Biology Education from Florida Institute of Technology, her Master's Degree in Ed Leadership from Troy University, and her Doctorate from National Lewis University in Chicago. Dr. Baker-Dreighton taught high school science, then moved into administration, where she worked at all levels. And then from there, she moved into the Assistant Principal pool, where she became Assistant Principal at all three levels, but also Principal at all three levels. Some of the schools that she served are La Vista Elementary, which was a transformation school with the state, Memorial Middle School, a transformation school with the state, and Waukaia High School. During her tenure at Waukaia, a school which with a 99% free and reduced, she maintained an average graduation rate of 95% and above. Today, with your approval, I'm recommending Dr. Tamira Baker-Dreighton as the Director for Secondary Curriculum 6 through 12 for the Teaching and Learning Division. If approved, her start date will be July 10, 2023. And I believe we have a short video prepared.
Okay, we're going to go, board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion to approve Dr. Tamira Baker-Dreighton?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Burnett, and thank you, Mr. Persis. Any discussion? I'd like to say that, you know, I appreciated that her entire resume was sent to us as board members and her back, she's got an extensive background. And what she's done, I immediately was able to tell because of knowing what a lot of those schools are, that this is someone that has taken some very difficult, challenged schools and turned them around. So I look forward to meeting her. Any other discussion? And at this time, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then it passes unanimously. And we look forward and we'd love to see a video from her.
Good evening, Volusia County School Board. I would first like to thank School Board Chair Haynes, Board Member Burnett, Board Member Cologne, Board Member Persis, Board Member Thompson, Superintendent Balgobin, and Dr. Valet for the opportunity to serve as the Director of Secondary Curriculum. I would like to thank my loving husband, Jason, and our children, Lauren and Josh, for always supporting me. I would also like to thank my family and closest friends for always being there for me. Finally, I am so thankful for the opportunity to help Volusia County Schools fulfill its vision and mission. I will strive to leave with grace and respect as we continue to achieve academic gains and educational excellence. Thank you again.
Thank you. And we'll have her at the next board meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Your next appointment?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. I would like to ask Ms. Ally Johnston to join us. To share a little bit with you regarding Ms. Johnston, she's earned her Bachelor's Degree in Early Childhood Education and her Master's Degree in Ed, in Education from Ashford University in Arizona with a specialization in Ed, in Special Education. She holds also certification in English for Speakers of Other Languages ESOL and Exceptional Student Education ESE. Ms. Johnston has experience as an ESE teacher and an ESE specialist. Most recently, she was an ESE supervisor in Latua County. She also served in Marion County. Today, I'm recommending Ms. Ally Johnston as Assistant Director for Exceptional Student Education. Education. If approved here by the board, her effective start date will be July 3rd, 2023.
Board, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Burnett, and a second?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Is there any discussion? I studied your resume also. And I have to tell you, the fact that you started out with the little ones tells me you have a heart, because you have to love those little ones when they walk in the door and you don't, we don't know what they're coming with or what their needs are. And when you can open up your arms and embrace them and help them on their path, it just helps because you can't, if you don't start then, it's so much harder to correct it at a later date. But we're going to call for a vote now. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate it. Scoot up. I said, "Thank you very much, and I greatly appreciate this opportunity to serve Volusia County, and I'm so looking forward to this opportunity. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you."
And don't leave, because we will want to take photos.
We have pictures to do. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, our third, I would like to ask Mr. Nathaniel Anderson, Nathan Anderson. Okay, there we go. Please join us. Want to share with you a little bit about Mr. Anderson, and I think some of you know this already, but for the record, he has his bachelor's degree from the University of Central Florida, his master's degree in Ed Leadership from Nova Southeastern University. He holds certification in Ed Leadership and Social Studies 6 through 12. Mr. Anderson started teaching in Volusia County Schools in 2015 at Campbell Middle School. He then became the teacher in assignment at Westside Elementary where I first met him, and an assistant principal at both River Springs Middle and Mainland High. With your approval here, board, today, if you approve, I'm recommending for him, well, first and foremost, I'm recommending for Mr. Nathan Anderson to be the coordinator of Student Services. And if you rec, if you approve his recommendation, his effective date will be July 3rd, 2023.
Thank you. Board members, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Burnett. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Any discussion?
I can't wait to hear the speech because the last one was really good, too.
I just want to say this, from the first time I met you, you have not only a heart for students, but you have patience, and you're calm, and that's what you bring to all the settings that you've been in. And I think that those are skills, because our lovely Ms. Rose Roland sleeping us, but I think those are skills that someone needs to possess in order to do that position and do it well. And so I am happy to see you here this evening. But if there's no other discussion, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Balgobin, I thank you for this opportunity to expand my territory and my ability to serve. I thank my beautiful children who have been with me through every obstacle, every turn. I thank those who have mentored me both in the district and outside of the district in my personal life. I thank you. I thank you for all the efforts, all of the support, all that you've given me. I sincerely thank you. I sit here in awe, matter of fact, I'm going off script, but that's okay. I actually shedded a tear while I was driving here, because I look back over my life, and I am so grateful, and I am so thankful for the journey. Most of you know, and for those who don't know, I started my career here in Volusia County as a custodian. And as I was reflecting on that, I was also reflecting on another moment. There was a moment in my life where I had a teacher post-graduation that I encountered that changed the trajectory of my life. I was working in a store, and she came in, and we had a conversation, and she asked me during the conversation, what school, what college do you attend? And ashamedly, I had to tell her that I wasn't in school. She asked me why, but we, I hurried past that subject, and I moved on to another subject, and she finished her purchase. And on her way out the door, she stopped, she turned and looked at me, and she said, "You should really reconsider going back to school." The reason that that story is so important, because the part that I left out is in high school, my guidance counselor told me that I didn't have what it took, take to go to school. And sadly enough, I believed him. So I spent the early parts of my life shooting for the low fruit, aiming low, never believing that I can rise above a certain level. But somehow, some way, that conversation kept ringing in my spirit. It kept reminding me that, yes, you can. And one day, I took a leap of faith, and I signed up for school, and I never looked back. So the thing that resonates with me the most, most people see this as an appointment, I see this as confirmation of hard work, of faith, of trusting in your Creator. I say this as I accept this position, and I thank you. If there's someone that's watching this, I leave with you the same message that that teacher left with me. Reconsider. Take another look at your dreams, take another look at your goals, and trust God for the rest. Thank you for this opportunity.
Dr. Balgobin?
Nathan, I'm going to start limiting how many times you can come here. Making my board cry.
Don't go anywhere, we got pictures.
All right, so we're moving right along. I would like to ask now Ms. Alita Hopkins to join us to share a little bit with you, Chair and board members. Ms. Hopkins earned her bachelor's degree in Elementary Education at St. Leo College and a master's degree in Ed Leadership from National Lewis University. She holds certification in Ed Leadership, Elementary Ed, English Speakers of Other Languages in Reading. Ms. Hopkins has been with Volusia County Schools since 2014, when she began as a teacher at University High. She went on to teach at New Smyrna Beach High before becoming assistant principal at New Smyrna Beach High School as well. Today, I'm recommending Ms. Alita Hopkins as the Coordinator of Exceptional Student Education, ESE. If approved by the board, her start date will be July 3rd, 2023.
All right, board members, you've heard the recommendation of the superintendent. Do I have someone that would like to make a motion?
I motion to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Any discussion? All right. It's, nobody wants to talk tonight but me, I guess. What I have to say is thank you, because the fact that also you started and got your degree in Elementary Ed, you've seen the spectrum. And yes, you've spent a lot of time at high school, but we also know that our high school students totally need to be supported, and sometimes that support looks differently than what it does for our little ones. And so we're going to call for a vote, but I'm happy to see you here tonight. So anything else? All right, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you. I really have been on an amazing journey, and to follow the lead of Nathan before me, have had my lead, my guide, my God. My husband, my family has supported me so strongly. My Cuda colleagues, which I promised to mention tonight, have very strongly guided me, supported me, and surrounded me with a lot of learning. I am honored, to say the least, to take the position of Access Coordinator, and will do my best job always. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Balgobin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving right along, I would like to ask at this point in time, Ms. Rachel Loubert to join us. Here she comes. Ms. Loubert has earned her bachelor's degree in Elementary Education from Daytona State College, and her master's degree in Ed Leadership from Stetson University. She holds certification in Elementary Ed, K through 6, and ESOL endorsement and Reading endorsement as well. Ms. Loubert has been with Volusia County Schools since 2013, when she started as a teacher at Spirit Elementary. She went on to teach ESOL at Manatee Cove Elementary, becoming the administrative teacher on assignment at Forest Lake Elementary. Today, with your approval, I am recommending Ms. Rachel Loubert as Assistant Principal at Forest Lake Elementary, and if approved, her effective date would be July 24, 2023.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I have a motion?
I will gladly make the motion. Welcome to D5.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So Mr. Cologne made the motion, and Mrs. Burnett seconded it. Any discussion?
Super excited to have you continue the work. You've been there as a TOA, heard great things, and everyone is excited, and so I'm looking forward for you to continue that work in building up Forest Lake Elementary.
I'm going to tell it myself for a minute. As all of you come up here, I'm like, I'm getting old, because I remember when so many of you started your careers, and I didn't really think of myself as being old. But now they're, all, they all started as young teachers at some point during my career, and now they're all here being, becoming principals and assistant principals and other positions, but we are happy to have you here tonight. So let's call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Congratulations.
All right, good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair Haynes, board members, Superintendent Dr. Balgobin, and members of the audience. I would like to first thank my husband and my son, who are with me tonight, for always supporting, helping, and encouraging me in my education and career, my family and friends and colleagues as well. I would also like to thank all of my administrators that have supported and helped push me to become the leader I am today. Ms. Freeman, Dr. Miller, Mr. Sanford, Ms. Soika, Dr. Grant, Ms. Young, Ms. Miles, Ms. Mendez, and Mr. Vaughn, just to name a few. As well as thank Ms. Hoag, who has helped guide and support me in becoming an assistant principal. As I am a product of Volusia County Schools graduating from Deland High in 2004, I am excited to continue supporting the students in Volusia County. I am also so excited to continue working and supporting the faculty, students, and families at Forest Lake Elementary. We're going to continue on our path for success. Go Panthers!
All right, and please stay for photos. Dr. Balgobin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're almost to the end, two more to go. I would like to ask at this time for Ms. Julie Murray to join us, and to share a little bit with you. She started her education right here in Volusia County, and she started at Woodward Elementary, and then Southwestern Middle, and then also for you to know is that she graduated from Deland High School. She earned her bachelor's degree in Early Education. Please don't tell me.
She taught, she taught her.
I, no, I didn't teach her.
Okay. I taught me to help to love children.
I sat on the committee to hire her to be a kindergarten teacher at Blue Lake, which is really where she started.
That's where she started, like Celeste?
It's okay.
That's fine.
I can tell you where she's been.
I know we're going to hear another story. I knew it from the time I said she, she was, she went to school here in Volusia County. To continue, she's earned her Early Childhood Education from the University of Central Florida, her master's degree in Ed Leadership from Nova Southeastern University. She holds Ed Leadership Certification in K-12, Early Childhood Education, and has endorsement in ESOL. Ms. Murray has been with Volusia County Schools since 2005, when she started at Blue Lake.
Blue Lake Elementary.
I was waiting to just say that in the middle, okay? She went on to becoming an intervention teacher at Woodward Elementary, and then an academic coach also. Most recently, Ms. Murray has worked at George Marx Elementary as an academic coach, and last year became the TOA on assignment, teacher on assignment. Today, I'm recommending to the board, Ms. Murray, as the Assistant Principal at Freedom Elementary, and with your approval here this evening, if it's approved, her effective start date will be July 24, 2023.
Okay, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation for Ms. Murray to be Assistant Principal at Freedom Elementary. Do I have a motion?
I makes a motion.
And do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Very good. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes. I won't tell anything. No. I did, I had the opportunity when Ms. Julie Murray first got hired to teach kindergarten to be right there and see her start as a teacher here in Volusia County Schools. And over the years, I've had the opportunity to watch her grow and develop, and you are more than ready for this position, and I know that your heart is in Deland, and I so appreciate that you applied for Freedom Elementary. And I knew nothing about it until I got a text saying that they were going to recommend you, and I was like, wow. And then I got a text from my sister-in-law, who seemed to know. But I've watched Julie, and even during having her wonderful son, who is a wonderful young man, and I so appreciate not only her and her son, but her entire family, because maybe someday there'll be a connection. I have, I have a lovely niece who, her and Julie's son are best buds, and it's a wonderful thing, but I'm happy to see you here this evening.
All right, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor?
I just want to say one. No, I just, I know, I never get to say these things because I haven't been here forever. However, I do know that Julie has made a huge impact on multiple people, and somewhat, I have followed her career and repeatedly heard amazing things about everything she's done, and I know that there are so many people, one in particular, who is going to hate to see you leave that school. Like I, if he's watching right now, he's probably crying, but I'm so proud of you, and I cannot wait to see everything you do, so congratulations.
Thank you. I said I wasn't going to cry. All right, now I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Good evening, Superintendent Balgobin, Chairman Haynes, and board members. I am humbled, honored, and delighted to be here, accepting my new role as Assistant Principal at Freedom Elementary. I want to thank you all for providing this new endeavor in my career with Volusia County Schools. I would also like to thank everyone who has believed in me along the way, my amazing husband Shane, and my greatest blessing, my son Ryan, for always supporting me, my family who always believed in me. I want to especially thank all of the administrators along the way that have helped me grow, but especially Mrs. Young, for giving me the opportunities to grow and pushing me out of my comfort zone, literally. Thank you to each and every one of you for building me into the educator and leader I am today. I would also like to thank my GME family. You guys keep rocking, and thank you for always supporting me. To Dr. Narig, I am excited to continue to grow under your leadership. I look forward to working alongside of you. To my new faculty and families, I am excited to meet you and work together to build positive relationships and learning experiences. I can't wait to soar with the Falcons. I did start as a student at Woodward.
Yes, you were a student, yeah.
You were a student at Woodward. Yes.
I have one more.
Just one more. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this is our last for this evening. I would like to ask Ms. Carol Richards to join us. Also, just to share a little bit with you, Ms. Richards began her education right here also in Volusia County as a kindergartner and graduated high school at Deltona High, Deltona High. You heard that, Mr. Cologne? Ms. Richards earned her Bachelor's Degree in Early Childhood Education pre-K through third at the University of Central Florida and her Master's Degree in Ed Leadership from Stetson University. She holds certification in Ed Leadership, Early Childhood Education, and holds endorsement in English for Speakers of Other Languages and Reading. Ms. Richards has been with Volusia County Schools since 2010, when she began as a teacher at George Marx Elementary. She wanted, she went on then to teach at Citrus Grove Elementary and then became the academic coach at Spirit Elementary. Most recently, she has been a teacher on assignment at Sunrise Elementary. If approved by the board, I am recommending that Ms. Carol Richards to be the Assistant Principal at Volusia County, Volusia Pines Elementary, and her effective start date will be July 24, 2023.
All right. Thank you. You've heard the superintendent's recommendation for Ms. Carol Richard, Assistant Principal of Volusia Pines. Do I have a motion?
We're gonna battle over this one, but I'm gonna make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Haines. Do I have a second?
And I will make the second.
Very good. Do we have any discussion?
Here's what's nice about Ms. Richards. She's a west side of the county girl, so that's why Mr. Cologne and I are like, who's gonna make the motion? Because she's gone back and forth between District One, where she started, and District Five, but she's coming back over to District One, but the bottom line is she stayed on the west side of the county, and we appreciate everything you've done. We appreciate everything you've done, and we're excited that you're here this evening.
And just never forget where home is.
All right, let's call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously.
Congratulations.
I wanted to thank everyone here, Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Baugabin, and the community for this opportunity. I started this journey when Ms. Hazel hired me in 2010, and I am honored to continue to learn and grow while leading it with grace and respect within Volusia County, just like so many of the wonderful leaders and role models that have been part of my path. Ms. Gordon, thank you for being the next person on my path, and I look forward to working alongside you. I want to thank my family and friends who have been my rock, and to my Volusia Pines family that I will be joining. I look forward to growing together with each and every one of you. To steal a few words from Ms. Sulo, you can't hide that Panther pride, and I am humbled to be the newest member to join the Panther Den. I look forward to serving Volusia Pines students, teachers, and community. Thank you.
And I have also three new assignments. These are not appointments, they're new assignments. So the three individuals that I would like to name, Ms. Sylvia Garcia Wolf, she will be going as the Assistant Principal to McKenna's Elementary. And I just wanna say a special thank you to Ms. Wolf, because she was instrumental in the planning and the design and implementation of our very first two units of dual-language program here in Volusia County. And also this year, she was also equally instrumental in planning our next two dual-language programs along with our French Academy. So thank you, Ms. Wolf, and I know that she's really looking forward to going to McKenna's Elementary and serving that community, and she's going to do very great with the principal that's there. Also Amy Richardson, I would like to thank her, who is going as the Assistant Principal at Herbert Street Alternative Ed. And Ms. Richardson, to share a little bit with you, has expressed the desire to continue to grow professionally in her career, so this will be another great opportunity for her. And Christopher Rushing, who will be going as the Assistant Principal at Turity Small Elementary. I wanna thank all three of these individuals for their willingness not just to grow professionally, personally, but also their willingness to serve the students in our district. Thank you to all three of them. And now we will begin the pictures.
So for all of you that we have named into a new position this evening, that you came up and spoke, will you, along with your family and any of your school family that you have here, make your way forward? We're gonna do the pictures one at a time, and we're going to do them in the order of how we announce them. So we will be starting with Mrs. Ally Johnston. Well, actually, we're gonna do Mrs. Camacho first, because we missed her from last time, so Mrs. Camacho is first.
Yay, congratulations.
It's your family.
Your family. Come on in. Family first.
Here we go.
One, two, three, everybody smile.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good times.
Go on that one.
I really caught it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
She's so happy for you.
She's not messing around.
Thank you.
Almost there.
Wait, wait, come on.
Us with them.
She should have that again.
I know where she's going.
Come on in, the next group.
That's us, come on.
Come on, come on.
We're happy you're here.
In the middle.
Congratulations.
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 On your wives, make a coffee.
Come on.
That's perfect.
Spot for you.
One, two, three, smile.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
My wife, my wife would be so happy to.
Awesome.
Go back so far.
I've never been there.
I've never been there.
She's like, I need to.
Rose.
And I can use your phone.
Yeah.
Where's your phone?
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 She's not messing around.
Thank you. Almost there.
Are you waiting?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, come on.
Us with them.
She should have that again.
I know where she's going.
Come on in, the next group.
That's us, come on.
Come on, come on.
We're happy you're here.
In the middle.
Right in the middle.
Congratulations.
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 On your wives, make a coffee.
Come on.
That's perfect.
Spot for you.
One, two, three, smile.
Thank you.
Who's next?
Who's next?
Nate.
My wife, my wife would be so happy to.
Awesome.
Go back so far.
I've never been there.
I've never been there.
She's like, I need to.
Rose.
And I can use your phone.
Yeah.
Where's your phone?
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 Oh, there you go.
Hey, Rose.
He's smiling, so I guess I didn't get him upset, huh?
There you are.
Smile, thank you.
Beautiful picture.
God is good.
God is good.
You'll be back.
Oh, you're a good person.
We are a charmer.
Who's next? Yay! I didn't know who you were, honey.
I'll never forget that.
You guys want the middle right there?
Happy day.
Congratulations.
Pretty good.
Congratulations.
You got everything.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hey, how you doing?
You guys.
Congratulations.
Yeah, you did it.
Look at this.
I love it.
Look at the high five right there.
I know, I forgot.
Yeah.
It's no jet, nothing.
I know, I know, I told you.
Therefore, there's a be jet like there should be a jet.
I'm gonna swim over the river from Mexico quicker than I got here in America.
Who's next? Here we go.
How about you guys?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Oh, it looks, we need to shift a little bit.
Are you okay?
It's cute.
Perfect.
Thanks for coming.
That's what sort of clap?
Thank you.
That's it, sir.
No, you had to.
They started, you know, basically together at every school.
Of course.
That's right.
There, one more picture.
All right, one more picture.
She wants you back.
Carl, Carl.
Another?
Hold on, Julio's coming.
My smile bigger than you, Christopher.
Okay, everybody. One, two, three, four, five.
Just in case.
The cheese.
What is, what is?
Fly, I think.
Jamie, we're gonna do all the recognition, all the recognition.
Welcome back. It's always exciting when we get to name people to new positions and their families are here with them, especially when they've worked really hard, and a lot of them are products of Volusia County Schools themselves. But I was asked if we could just take a quick five-minute break, so if all of you will bear with me, we will be back in here at 5:58 to continue with our recognitions, so thank you.[1407.38]
That's it, sir. No, you had to.
They started, you know, basically together every school.
Of course.
There, one more picture.
All right, one more picture. She wants you back in here. Carl, Carl.
Another?
Hold on, Julio's coming.
My smile bigger than you, Christopher. My smile bigger.
Just in case she'll...
The cheese. Oh, it's... There it is.
What is...
Fly, I think.
Jamie, we're gonna do all the recognition, all the...
Of course, fly.
Recognitions.
Welcome back. It's always exciting when we get to name people to new positions and their families are here with them, especially when they've worked really hard. And, um, and a lot of them are products of Volusia County Schools themselves. But I was asked if we could just take a quick five-minute break. So if all of you will bear with me, we will be back in here at 5:58 to continue with our recognitions. So thank you. Welcome back. At this time, we're moving right along to item 5.01, recognitions. Dr. Balgobin?
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, members of the audience. We have three recognitions this evening. And we know how important is the safety and security of all students and staff. That's actually a standalone goal for us. And it's a job that we can't do alone. We really need our partners. And it is with much grace and respect and full admiration that we acknowledge the leaders in our law enforcement community. These are individuals who dutifully serve Volusia County Public Schools 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's nonstop, the work that they do. So we, I want to make it known that we're very grateful for their tireless efforts that they put forward each and every day to create, again, that safe and secure learning environment for all students and staff in Volusia County Public Schools. So at this time, with that said, I'm asking Dr. Earl Johnson, our Chief Operating Officer, to join me as we would like to welcome our law enforcement chiefs who are here in attendance this evening.
Madam Chair, School Board members, Superintendent Balgobin, we all know that the number one goal and for the superintendent is to ensure that we have a safe and secure campuses here in Volusia County. There's a direct correlation between students, faculty and staff feeling safe and student achievement. If schools are safe, students will find themselves in an environment which will be conducive to learning. I would like to thank the Sheriff's Department and all the police chiefs of the different municipalities for their continued support to Volusia County Schools. On behalf of the School Board of Volusia County and Superintendent Balgobin, I would like to offer our heartfelt appreciation for your service and contributions to the students and staff of Volusia County Schools. We would like to recognize our partnerships with our local law enforcement agencies this evening. As I call your name and agency, please stand. Audience, please hold your applause until the names have been called. Once the names have been called, I will ask the recipients to come forward to be recognized by the board. Recognizing the Volusia County Sheriff's Department, attending this evening, Division Chief Tim Morgan and Sergeant Austin Hairston. Recognizing the City of Ormond Beach Police Department, attending is this evening, Chief Jesse Godfrey and Captain Rus. Recognizing the City of Daytona Beach, I haven't seen him, is Chief Jakari Young present? Recognizing the City of Deland Police Department, I did not see him, is Deputy Chief Adam Kishart here this evening? Recognizing the City of South Daytona Beach, attending this evening, Chief Mark Chitham. Now, we can give them a round of applause. If each of you would please come forward to be recognized by our board and the superintendent.
Hi, love, how are you? How can I get this in here?
We appreciate it. Mine's on the left. There's an opening on the left there.
One at a time, and all together.
And then all together at the end. We're gonna, we're gonna get our money's worth here with their... Alright.
One, two, three, smile!
Would you guys wait right here for the...
They can't hear you out.
Unless you just wait over there, and then we're gonna call you back. Go right there. If you can go right here, so we get this... You're gonna need a filter for this one. I don't know, Dr. I don't know if you heard, but from the county, they said that we're gonna need a lot of... Right, that's what they just said.
I think you guys look great. One, two...
You as well.
Thank you. One, two, three, smile, everybody.
Okay. You guys can just wait over there. Wait over there.
I'm excited. Oh, ready?
Okay, ready.
One, two, three, smile!
Okay, everybody.
Gotta stand together.
Hang on, let's get a guy's chair, you can be seated. Okay. Everybody good? Perfect, yes, sir! Thank you. Thank you again.
We're out of trouble, good.
Alright, we appreciate it.
Alright. I'm gonna make him jealous by that. Oh, no, I won't let him do that.
Now, we're moving on to item 5.02, recognition of students that are state champions.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, members of the audience. I would like to invite Mr. Larry Beal, our Specialist for Athletics, to come forward as we would like to recognize and honor our track and field state champions. Larry, Larry Beal will invite the schools to join him.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Balgobin, Chair Haynes, board members, meeting guests, and those listening from home. We are here tonight to honor Atlantic High School's state track champions. I would like to introduce Principal Jason Watson, who will introduce his staff and athletes.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Balgobin, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to celebrate our student athletes. I gotta tell you, the boys were very patient, waiting in the audience. The only question I got from them was, is there food at the end? Honest question. I was there, right there with them, so... But you guys, honestly, track and field is one of the sports that we're the most proud of at Atlantic High School. We are becoming a powerhouse in that area. We have not one four-by-four hundred state champion relay teams. We have two repeated. So we are state champion repeats. Then we added another state title this year of the javelin, which, guys, I didn't even know we owned a javelin.
What is a javelin? What is a javelin?
I don't know. But representing, representing our athletics department, we have our athletic director, Ms. Shawna Cox. We also have Mr. Zachary Russell, who is a student who just graduated Atlantic High School and will represent the four-by-four hundred relay team. And then we also have Preston Kuznov, who is here as our javelin state champion. I'd like to invite Coach Cox to come up and share some details.
Good evening. I'm speaking today on behalf of Coach Marcus, who couldn't be here today. And I must say, before I start, she's pretty long-winded. So, um, there's quite a lot going on at Atlantic, and I'm a brand-new A.D. there. And this is kind of one of my first things I'm doing as A.D. I'm presenting state champions. So I think that's a pretty good start for me and for us. Alright, on behalf of Coach Marcus, I would like to thank the School Board, Larry, my athletes, and everyone who continues to support us and honor us. This team was a very tough team. This team is like a family. We go through ups and downs, cry and laugh. Together, we face adversities and have been really building a dynamic program within these past three years, pushing academics and sports. But we push through times when it matters. With that being said, with just nine boys compared to other schools who have 35-plus to take to state, with these nine boys who scored in each of their events that they were in, we were able to place second overall in the 2A State Meet, making it the first time that Atlantic High School has ever placed that high in a state series. Through all of the adversities we faced this season, we were able to defend our state titles and become back-to-back state champs in the four-by-four meter relay. The program sent five student athletes to school on a full-ride scholarship to compete on a collegiate level. Atlantic High School is ranked number six in the state of Florida. Atlantic High School four-by-four is ranked 20th in the nation for the second time. Preston was a baseball player and a football player who came out to track to get faster on the field. He started out running the 100 and didn't really like running, so he transformed to a javelin thrower. The first couple of times he threw it, he placed top six. The Florida relays, he was ranked 15 out of 16 competitors that day. He threw 201 feet, which changed the trajectory of the state's leader. That throw made him the state leader and the school holder. He won five consecutive times, including being the state champ in the 2023 State Meet. Placed 13th out of 60 athletes in the championship javelin throw at New Balance Nationals in Pennsylvania. Currently, has eight schools who are recruiting him. He won Volusia County Athlete of the Week three times. Currently, he is the number two in the state of Florida and number 13 in the nation. Aiden Dixon, who started out as a cross-country runner, turned into a 400 runner within a matter of one season, perfecting his craft from the start, more high-level workouts. With his determination and confidence and work ethic, he's a nationally-ranked runner. Sophomore year, he placed sixth in the state meet in the 400-meter dash. His junior year, he placed third in the 400-meter and the 200, and he won state in the four-by-four. He's Volusia County, he's Volusia County's five-star champion. He competed at the 22 New Balance Nationals, which was held in Pennsylvania, which is also an invite-only meet. He placed third overall in the championship section of the 400-meter dash. Junior year, he was number eight in the U.S. in the 400. I told you that was a lot. Senior year, he placed fourth in the four-by-one, placed second in the 400-meter dash, placed fifth in the 200-meter dash, and is part of the 2023 back-to-back four-by-four state champs. He also was invited to the Nike Indoor Nationals, where he placed second overall in Nike Nationals as an invite-only meet. Indoor track and field, he's number two in the nation with a new facility record. Aiden has several school records, the 800-meter, 400-meter, 200-meter, four-by-four, four-by-one, four-by-two in SMR. Holds seven meet records, two-time state champion in the four-by-four. Scored 27 points in the state meet alone. Throughout his three years running track, Aiden Dixon has won a total of 31 consecutive 400-meter track wins for the season. He's currently the number two in the state of Florida in the 400 and number 11 in the nation. He won Volusia County Athlete of the Week six times, and he will be attending USF on a track scholarship. Now, I'm sure these are just a few of the words she wanted to say about these lovely young men and the ones that couldn't be with us. But I think if she would be here, she could leave you with one thing, Sharks are definitely rising. Thank you. Think they want to say something.
Oh, perfect.
Alright, yes.
Sure. Yeah.
Hello? Just had to make sure, just had to make sure. Uh, I just wanted to take this moment to say thank you for the opportunity to be here and thank my, both my coaches and my parents for all the opportunities they've given me and all the support. And that's all I really gotta say.
Okay, um, also want to thank my parents, my grandma mostly, she started me off with this. So, um, of course, my coaches, you know, I wouldn't have been where I am without her. So we're definitely grateful for her. And on top of that, you know, Atlantic High School, best school in the county, so we're good with that, too. Um, yeah, so Sharks win. That's about it.
If you'll come forward for a photo. If you'll come forward for a photo.
That way, you guys can sit and not have to...
One more. Thank you, everybody.
Continuing on with our track and field champs, we welcome Deland High.
Yay, Deland High.
We're here to honor Deland High's state track champion. I would like to introduce Principal Michael D. Dramo, who will introduce his staff and athlete.
Good evening, Chairman Haines, school board members, Superintendent Balgobin. Thank you for this opportunity to bring our highlighted student to be recognized today by the Volusia County School Board. This is Kylie Nada. She is the state pole-vaulting champion for FHSAA. I invited Coach Lowenstein to give you some highlights of her season this year.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to highlight this young lady here. She's also one of my students. She's in my class, and it's a joy having her. And she comes from a great family. Her mom and dad are both Volusia County schoolteachers and very competitive, very athletic. She's done a great job. In February of 2022, after talking to her, she was a freshman, after talking to her all year about, because she used to be a level-eight gymnast, I said, "You got to try pole vault." And February, I put a pole in her hand. Here's how we start. We got through the season. She did very well. And then, she went on to Thin Air Vault Club down in Seminole County with Coach Bill Cashman, a good friend of ours. And Bill, by, I think, within two months, within two months, she had broken our school record by two feet. And she went to the national AAU championships last summer. She still continues to train. She's there from ten in the morning to one o'clock in the afternoon every day during the summer. She's still training. She's competing in meets this summer. She vaulted three-point-seven-five meters, which is about twelve foot, three inches. She cleared it on her first attempt. That's the highest height that was cleared at the state meet this year. Her training partner, Maddie from George Jenkins, also cleared three-seven-five, but on her third attempt. And then, they went up to three-point-nine. Neither one of the girls got it, but Kylie was going second. And I looked at Coach Bill, and I said, "I'm looking at Kylie on the runway," and I said, "You know, she's not thinking about, did she win the state meet? She's thinking about, I want to get three-point-nine meters." That's where she's at. That's how competitive she is. We're very proud of her. She's an IB student at Deland High School. Excellent grades, excellent student. And now, she'd like to say a few words.
I'd like to say thank you to my family and both of my coaches, my club coach and my school coach. They've been with me through the entire thing. I don't know where I'd be without, especially my club coach. He's taken me through the entire process. I'm very thankful for him for making me start pole vault. Just very thankful for everything and this opportunity.
I want you to come up for a photo, and your parents, too. I see them in the back. Wow. Is University High here or not here?
Is University here?
Negative.
I don't think so. That's...
All right, then, we're moving on to item 5.03, recognition of staff.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, members of the audience, those of you listening at home. This is a bittersweet moment for me and for our staff. Last week, we had the opportunity of celebrating one of our family members, I say, our professional family members, right out here. And I will tell you that this individual will dearly miss our cabinet meetings, and this individual will also dearly miss our board meetings.
Oh, yes. Oh, especially.
No surprise to you, our very own beloved Rosie Roland. So, I know I had the honor of working with Ms. Roland as deputy soup here as we embarked upon COVID-2020. And, you know, when you're working in an atmospheric environment where everything is a hundred-and-sixty miles an hour, quickly, you get to learn people, you get to see their personalities, who they are, what they're all about. So, usually, if COVID had not occurred, it probably would have taken years for me to really to get to know some staff members at that level. But no, with COVID, everything gets accelerated, and you know what that was like, because we lived through it. But one thing that has been consistent throughout the whole, as a deputy soup and also serving as a superintendent and working with Rose Roland, and I refer to her as Rosie, I refer to her as Rosie because that's my love for her. I will share with you, and I've said this before, that when it comes to skill set, if you have an open mindset or you have a growth mindset, if you're open to learning, I can teach you skills if you're open to that. But the one thing that no one can teach an individual is how to form a character and how to nurture that character, so to speak, because that is something that comes from your belief system, what you value. And this lady here has a strong belief system with a character that is absolutely impeccable when it comes to her belief system, being a balanced individual, her love for others. When it comes to being a professional, top-of-the-line, she is a top-notch. I call her like a Cadillac, right? She's classy, caring, and truly exceptional at everything that she's done here for Volusia County for thirty-five years. Rose Roland was one of those individuals that if I had one call to make, I would make it to Rose any given day because of who she is. So, I want you to know that as you're closing out this chapter and you're embarking upon a new, we, your family here, the board, myself, your cabinet family, everyone here in the audience, everyone that you've served in this county, we're so grateful for you, Rose, and your family, and everything that you have done day in and day out to serve this county with grace and respect. You are an embodiment of grace and respect, and you have carried yourself that way each and every, at least from the time I've known you. Each and every day, that's who you are. So, my love, as you rent that Cadillac and you get ready to go on that road trip that you so deserve, know that I hope that we will all continue to be a part of that new chapter that you will be writing, because it's about the people. And the people here in this boardroom and those that are listening, those that you've served, either directly or indirectly, we love you. We appreciate all your thirty-five years of service. And she will not be a stranger to us, chair and board members, because she's promised that she will continue to be a part of our lives. But for all the kids and their lives that you have touched, Rose, thank you so very much. Little token of appreciation from all of us here, the board, myself, cabinet, this is for you. We would like you to take it home, okay? But we're going to take a last picture, too, after you say a few words.
To Chairwoman Haines, board members, and Dr. Balgobin, this has been a very fruitful thirty-five-year ride for me. I've stayed thirty-five years because I've always enjoyed what I did, coming to work every single day. I came because I do care about people as a whole. I look back at where I came from. My mom was a single parent. She raised three boys and myself, and we never wanted for one single thing. She worked extremely hard to make sure that we were able to do all the things the other children were able to do. And back in the, when we were children, there was no child support. She moved here when she was young. She had all four of us, and she didn't have a high school diploma because she lived on a farm. But she moved here, and she went to night school at the old Campbell High School when it was a centipede. And she went and worked in daytime, went to school at night, and she got her high school diploma. She then, in turn, went to Daytona State, earned her AA degree, and then she went to Bethel-Cookman and earned her college, her four-year degree in education. She's a retired teacher. So, the example that I had that was set before me, I had no choice but to do what I needed to do. My mom was always there for me, and I am grateful for her. It's just unfortunate that she's still here with us, but she's in a position where she can't be here. But she knows that I do appreciate all that she has done for me and my three brothers throughout our lifetime. She's always been there for us. We never wanted for anything. So, I had a very, very good example to follow. And I just, I'm a firm believer that if you take on a task, that task needs to be completed with all fidelity and with the best of your heart and the best that you can be. And my grandmother always told me, "Treat others as you want to be treated, and you will never mistreat anyone else, because you don't want to be mistreated." I started my career at Mainland High School, and I started as a dropout prevention teacher. And I had about fourteen to fifteen kids in my classroom. And those children would come to school. Some of them lived on their own. They lived with parents that didn't care. They didn't have to come to school. But because my mom was so supportive of me, I had every single phone number. And when they were in my classroom, I would call them. "Where are you? Don't go to the office. You come straight to this portal because you already missed enough of your lesson." And so, I see those children today still, and I shall never forget, I was standing in Seven-Eleven one afternoon, and I was in line getting ready to pay for my items. And so, someone behind me asked me a question. So, the young man in front of me turned around, and he says, "Is that you, Ms. Roland?" "Yes, Butch." I know his name. That's me. And so, when you see the fruits of your labor, he said to the cashier behind the counter, he said, "If it was not for this woman that's standing behind me, I would not be driving this Coca-Cola truck today," because she made sure I came to school. She did not let up. And that's the fruit of your labor that you want to see each and every day. If you made a difference in someone's life, that's what education is all about. It's about doing for others and making sure they have, you set them on a path that they can be successful. So, to each of you, board members, Dr. Balgobin, all of the principals I worked with for the thirty-five years, I have been nothing but supported throughout my career. I started at Mainland, left Mainland, went to Holly Hill, left Holly Hill, went to Taylor, from Taylor to Spears Creek High School, from Spears Creek High School to Silver Sands, and then to the district office. And so, my career has been a very, very rewarding one, and I am truly grateful for every second second that I have spent in Volusia County Schools. And it's an experience that I will never, ever forget. And all of those that had enough faith in me from when I started at Mainland High School, God bless Ms. Annie Piggott. She hired me, and she told me, she says, "I was working in a bank, and after getting robbed for the third time, I listened to my mom. She told me, 'You didn't go to school to be a banker.'" So, after the third time being robbed, I was convinced that that's not what I needed to do. So, I went to interview with Mrs. Piggott, and she says, "Rose Roland, you don't have a certificate at this point, but I'm going to wait for you to apply for one." And she waited, and she hired me. So, I thank God for having the belief that I could take on the job and do what needed to be done for those children that were not on the level where they needed to be. So, my ride with Volusia County Schools has been a wonderful ride, and I wouldn't trade it for anything in the world. So, I appreciate all of those that played a part in my life and being as successful as I am and putting a trust in me that I was going to do what was best for the children of Volusia County Schools, because they are my heart. And I work with children here at school. I work with the children at my church. So, children are a part of who I am. And don't mistreat them, because, Dr. Balgobin, I will take my earrings off.
I know you will. I know you will.
Thank you, Volusia County Schools. I appreciate it.
Let's take a picture with the board and then with your cabinet family, okay?
At this point in time, we're going to move to public participation. I appreciate anyone that was here to speak publicly, that you have been prepared for this, so that we could get through the appointments and recognitions. Mr. Gomez, I have one card. Do you have any more? All right. Is there anyone else that was planning on turning in a card for public input? All right. Then, at this time, we will start public input, and our one speaker tonight is Dr. Jerry Pickett. Please come forward, sir, and you have three moments, three minutes. Welcome.
Madam Chair, members of the board, superintendents of schools, consistently focused with the academic achievement of our underserved students and advocating against inequalities with faculty and staff. We come before the superintendent in this governing board pleading for the help and justice for Ms. Gloria Sanchez of Team Volusia, with twenty-five years of service and an outstanding record of hard work and dedication. Ms. Sanchez has been unjustly mistreated, denied continued employment, and unfairly terminated with no form of impartial agreement. We urge this governing body to reevaluate the critical points and take action to reinstate and resolve concerns with fairness. Points to note... Points to note, Ms. Sanchez faithfully served Team Volusia 25 years, nine years with Volusia County Schools, two years with Aramart, eight years with GCS and ABM Services, with outstanding evaluation as a head custodian with no occurrences. Unexpectedly, she was terminated after applying to work part-time in the cafeteria at the school while already serving as the school's head custodian. Later, she was informed the initial background check from Sterling One was cleared, but fingerprinting from Volusia County Schools detected an isolated personal incident that occurred in 1999 that was more than 20 years ago. During this process, the Florida Department of Law Enforcement Criminal Justice Information Services acknowledged court order to seal and expunge this ordeal moving forward, even though she was never guilty of an incident. Finally, with multiple efforts to get her primary head custodial job reinstated, Ms. Sanchez had no advocate for support as an adult Hispanic employee, no in-depth investigation, no due process, with no consideration. And just like that, she's terminated. This is unfair. This is unacceptable. Something needs to be done. Personally, as a former principal of the Alternative Education Program, I had the pleasure of serving with Ms. Sanchez. And her work was not only outstanding, but yes, indeed, it was impeccable. This is a situation that is not right, and something needs to be done. English is her second language, and she has no legal representation. So I need to know, who is advocating for the rights of this individual? We need the Superintendent in governing board to step in, utilize your authority to do what you can to help reinstate Ms. Sanchez. Let's just think about what it is that I'm saying. 25-year career, second job in the cafeteria, which led to her losing her entire career. We need your help. We're asking for your help. We plead for your help. Please act now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pickett. All right, we are now moving on to item 7.01, Removal of Any Items From the Consent Agenda. I have one, just a minute. I'd like to look at item 9.06. Do we have any other Board Members that have any items?
9.03, Madam Chair.
What?
9.03.
9.03?
Just have a question.
Anyone else? Okay, then we will start with item 9.03.
So I wanted to find out, I don't know if Bree is here, up, come on up. And so I noticed this is a strategic plan for three years, and ironically, I was surprised to see it as part of the agenda, seeing as no input was sought out from the Board, at Board's direction or anything of that matter. But what really caught my attention, and mind you, that's something we can talk about another day, but what caught my attention was that the CAPE Strategic Planning Team is only composed of one, two, three, four, five, six teachers out of our 60 programs that we've got, probably 50, 60. So the rest of it is Daytona State folks, it's Career Source, which I don't have a doubt that, you know, process-wise, that is appropriate. But I, I see a lack of teacher voice in this process. So I, I, you know, the strategic plan is, you know, we're going to submit it to the state, and it'll probably be approved, and that's fine. But I see a big gap there because there's only six teachers of all the programs that we have that provided input into this strategic planning. So I think that's an opportunity in the future. And then my other question in looking at this, how many of our programs are turning into academies next year?
That I'm not sure about. I believe we have four new academies, I believe. Seven new, okay, so seven new ones for next year. So if I, I'll address, so the teachers that were selected, were selected specifically, we wanted to have a representative teachers that taught various different subject areas. And so it wasn't as though they were the only input. Each of the teachers that were selected were tasked ahead of time to please gather input on your campuses, please gather input from the teachers of your other areas. And I'll tell you, I, I can't thank these teachers enough, if I may, I'd like to go ahead and list them. So Ms. Denise Johns from New Smyrna Beach High School, Mr. Brett Bradner from Deland High School, Mr. Rick Bowerson from Atlantic High School, Ms. Maureen Mack from University High School, Ms. Vicky Perry from Deland High School, and Mr. Guy Stevenson from Silver Sands. Because the state lies out the components for this plan, and some of them, you know, some of their, their teacher friends and peers, you know, were, were kind of wondering, really, this is what the state's asking us? And so they were put into some uncomfortable conversations with their peers on, you know, well, what can we do to, you know, meet the elements and create a plan to combat this? And so they did an amazing job of gathering feedback and bringing back things. And, and some of the things that were brought back were things that were not necessarily part of a plan, but just things that needed, you know, some conversation and, and some time to talk through things with, you know, like teachers across different campuses. And so these were the ones who were the representatives on the committee, but they were tasked with asking for content across their campus, like I said, and across their, their disciplines as well. And so it wasn't as though we only had the input of six folks. So they, they were representative, and, and many of them brought multiple pages of, of notes to talk through as, as we looked at each of the measures of success and the different components.
Well, the part that stuck out the most to me is that there's no representation in here from my district. No, there's nobody from Deltona High, Pine Ridge, Heritage, Deltona Middle that has five academies. And so that's where I'm, I think we have an opportunity, and, and again, I'm not opposed to approving this, this is, you know, I, I just, when we talk-
Some teachers that were invited, but they were not able to get off campus. So Deltona was, they did have a representative that was asked, but they weren't able to attend.
Gotcha. And so as we look at strategic planning, you know, this, to me, seems like the, you know, the document that's going to sit on the shelf versus a real-life document, like we're working on the rest of ours. So I'd like to see, you know, I don't know what stocktake would look like for some of these, looking at some of the measures, they're pretty, every year, the same thing. And honestly, I think we, we really need to amp up what we're doing. And so that, that's just my feedback. Again, I'm, you know, I ask this question, and please don't feel, I ask this question all the time because I always seek out who were the folks that made this decision, who were the folks, because that way tomorrow around the water cooler, folks can see who contributed to this, this product. And so to see that there's not that representation from lots of, and you've got some great folks on here, I have no question about that. I, I think there's opportunity there. I mean, when you see that there's more representation from outside of the district than there is from inside of the district, that, that's, and again, we need Career Source, we need Daytona State, we need all these great folks, but if the folks who are doing the job are not at the table, we're going to miss opportunities. So that's just my thought. Thank you.
If, if I may, so part of the statute that lies out the components says that we must include the folks from Career Source, from Daytona State. And so they were a part of the strategy process, obviously. But the teachers were also part of helping to contribute to the strategies that involved Career Source and Daytona State as well. And then we also have the CEO Alliance Group that was, is part of the process as well. And so I will say on your Board Docs, one of the support letters that we received after the Board Docs due date, we do have a letter of support from Career Source as well. Daytona State is supposed to be sending a, a letter of support as well to include as the packet as a whole. So should the Board approve this, when we post it on the website, we'll have all three of those letters of support posted with the document on our, on our CTE website.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, Board Members.
I'd like to share something with Mr. Cologne. I, I did meet with the CTE team, I think it was last week, and there is, Celeste, there is a placeholder, and I'm not sure if it's beginning of August, where we're doing a full-blown presentation. Vince and the entire team, they will be here doing a full-blown presentation.
So I selected 9.06, not necessarily anything directly related to achieve 3000, but it is that time of year when we start doing the renewals of programs and things. And so I know that we've been looking at, like, return on investment, and, you know, is this program, as well as other supplemental programs or technology programs, or even, you know, textbooks and materials, you know, are we seeing a return on investment to continue to spend these funds? And so I had told Dr. Balgobin I was going to pull this, just simply because I want to know, you know, what's happening, and if we're doing that, our due diligence to make sure, or are we just renewing things without knowing if there's anything coming from them that is beneficial for our students?
Would you like for me to answer the question now?
Yes.
So yes, actually, one of our protocols are, let me, yeah, it's a protocol moving forward that we have in place that for, before we do any program renewal or resources slash materials for REAP, that we're going to do a programmatic evaluation. So for this one, we did do one as, as it's part of our protocol. And I will tell you, Chair, 3000 is designed for Level 2s and 3 students. And I'll tell you just a quick summary here, it shows that for, we had in terms of the, so it's within the ranges of 2 and 3, okay, like Tier 2, Tier 3. We're seeing that the students that were in the high-quality range, we had 2,400 students within the high quality, and this is based on their scale score, okay? Out of 2,164, out of 2,400 students that were part of that scale score, 90.2% showed a Lexi level growth. And for the high-quality, low, low, high-quality students slightly below that full range, we had 1,628 students, 1207, 74.1% showed a Lexi growth. So if you look at it, I think it's on page 3, you will see that it gives you a summary there, but basically, the recommendation is for us to continue with this program for one more year. But again, this is just one exemplar, but we are doing this for every program because our programs have to support our state standards.
Correct. And with that being said, you know, at times, questions come up from individuals, you know, out in the community, or, you know, even sometimes staff about, you know, these renewals and, you know, and, and that's part of why I wanted you to share, like, this one and that the fact that you're doing a program evaluation. But it also comes up sometimes even about our textbooks. And, you know, I have personal experience because for years, I would be selected to sit on a textbook committee. And typically, our process is almost like an 18-month process. And we follow what the state-approved guidelines are. Like, we never select a textbook unless it's approved by the state. And we go through, you know, an 18-month process where teacher committees and different groups come together, only selecting from the state-approved materials. We open that up to the public so that the public and the community can come out and view the materials and how the teachers have ranked them and put in their input. And I know this is also the time of year when we start approving, like, to purchase additional textbooks or additional workbooks, practice, you know, the, the teacher supplemental, you know, for intervention and things like that. And so I just wanted to be clear so that the community hears this, we select materials from the state-approved list. We follow all of the state guidelines and the adoption guidelines. You're doing program evaluations on what we're using, along with the supplemental piece. I know that Dr. Kuhn and his team are working with Dr. Valley and his team on, you know, ensuring that the programs that we're using are consistent, and we are pulling data from those, and there's no confusion at the schools. Because I think the commu, we want the community to trust and know what we're doing, and we're transparent with it. And I just want to make sure that as we renew this, because this is that time of year where they're like, oh, they're just spending money, that they hear all the work that's being done.
Absolutely, absolutely. We are committed to ensuring that every program that our students are utilizing, A, supports state standards, and B, that we're seeing an, a return on our investment, meaning our students' time is our, is their investment, right? It's our investment. And we want to make sure that the programs are utilized with, with fidelity. So to just give you an example of that, on a weekly basis, we pull reports for every single one of our programs, we analyze those reports, we send them to the schools. So for example, a few school, a school here or there may have their, their usage, where it dropped from one week to another, they can look into it and see what students have not been logging in, and obviously, they can intervene in a timely manner. So not only are we monitoring at a district level, but we're sending those reports on a weekly basis to our school principals as well and their teams to review. When it comes to purchasing new programs, that there's a whole process that, that undergoes. And if it's a program that, that requires the IT Division, it will go to that, Mr. Dr. Kuhn and his team, who will then review to make sure that it's state-approved, that there is fidelity, there will be fidelity of implementation, and most importantly, alignment. Alignment to the primary sources of curriculum that we're utilizing and secondary sources of curriculum that we're utilizing. When it comes to the purchase of, of curriculum, primary resources are purchased from the district, and those are state-approved. Secondary resources are approved by the district also. And there's a disclaimer also, a statement or a curriculum maps to that effect.
But thank you, and thank you for taking time to explain that so that anyone listening at home or goes back and hears this understands that you, along with your staff, are doing their due diligence to ensure that the materials we're using are appropriate and that we're doing evaluations on them.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, any other questions about any of the items? Then at this time, do I have a motion to approve, well, wait, Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone that wants public input on consent items? Okay, at this time, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move approval of the consent agenda as presented, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Persis. Do I have a second?
You second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Any further discussion? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. We are now moving on to item 17.01, the Superintendent's Preliminary Budget for the Fiscal Year 2324.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. I would like to ask Mr. Sees, our Chief Financial Officer, to come forward. He's going to share with us our preliminary fiscal budget for 2324. Now you see Melissa is here, too.
Yes, it's always nice to see Melissa. Hi.
First of all, good afternoon, Board Members. This is really the start of the budget season. This is a preliminary budget report using April 2023 ending fund balances as our guide, and it also is using the conference report that was issued by our legislature, okay? We know this information's going to change when we receive the tentative budget information, and then we'll have a short time to turn around the information, advertise that, and produce a tentative. We, every day, we're receiving new information, and as I work through this budget book, I will go ahead and explain that to you. So this presentation's a little bit different. For our at-home viewers, they can actually pull this information down. I, I really wanted to walk through the budget book instead of doing a slideshow presentation because I want them to get familiar with the new layout of the budget book. Also, as we work through the budget cycle for the tentative budget, we're going to be adding a lot more information, I want to say useful information, information that you can refer back to of where we were in that point in time, and then followed by your final budget that will be presented in September. Just walking through this, we would, we have the table of contents, it just outlines what's in the book. In here, I put a lot of narratives, or I started adding narratives, I'm going to add a lot more narratives for you, Board Members, so sorry, and for the public so they can follow along. Some people like reading instead- Some people like reading instead of actually just looking at the numbers at a page, on a page. I just want them to be able to make sense. Okay, let's present it. So already, that was in the consent agenda was the approval of advertised for tonight. If we move on here, so let's move to page three if we could. Thank you. Oh, you have control of that? Oh, great. So page three, this is the millet rates that was provided to us in the conference report. We know this information already changed just today. Was it today, I think? Yes, today. We just read the, received the certification of school taxable value. And the amount under row, and I'm going to refer to row numbers. That's why I put a lot of row numbers on our documentation here. Is this that row fourteen of this? If you look at the proposed millet, it was saying sixty-three point eight billion or sixty-three point nine. If I want to round up, that number has actually changed based off of the certification now. That number is actually lower. So what does that mean? It's going to actually change the millet rates that will most likely have to be levied for our required local effort and will also influence the amount of revenue that would be generated in your capital projects file. Okay, just using this as an example here then, this is your proposed millet rates as of the conference report, that was the proposed tax roll. And that's the amount of money that would be generated based off of millet rates that we currently levy, not only for the required local effort, but also for your additional, your basic discretion or in your capital outlet. Okay, moving on, how does this influence or affect a individual property owner based on a two hundred thousand dollar value? I did this in increment, two hundred thousand. Home values are steadily increasing, it appears. And so I did it in two hundred, so if you have a four hundred thousand dollar home, you can multiply this by two, but just going through this exercise, the taxable value for the twenty twenty-three year, if your home was assessed at two hundred thousand, you took advantage of Save Our Homes, your taxable value then would be a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Then you just add what the current millet rates are for the year. That's how much you would have been paying. Then the next page was based off of the, again, conference proposed millet rates. Based on this analysis, we would have seen an increase in school-related taxes of thirty-two dollars and fifty-three cents based on a two hundred thousand dollar valuation of a home. Okay, any questions for me on that? The next page of the book is your general operating fund. It just, it's a narrative, it kind of goes over a little bit of information here for you, then followed by the Florida Education Finance Program, FFP components. I thought this was going to be useful. There was some changes that occurred. In the upcoming, based off, well, let's go back. Based on the legislative conference report, they, they took some programs. They didn't actually delete the programs, but they rolled it into your BSA and gave us a little bit more flexibility. And I'm going to explain that here shortly for you. But if you go through, this kind of explains what's going on. And there you go through the FFP basic programs. Some of those programs that rolled into your BSA would have been G, Florida Teachers Classroom Supply Assistance Instructional Materials, Reading Instruction, those rolled into the BSA. I'm going to show that to you shortly here. Some of those programs that were, was eliminated in this legislative process this year. This is Florida Digital Classroom Allocation, Funding Compression, Home Harm, Hold Harmless Allocation. Moving on here, now this is a, I believe, board members, you're kind of used to my layout and presentations of how we changed for the FFP calculations. I provided that also in your budget amendment report. How we changed between the second, I'm sorry, the third and fourth calculation. And that was supported by the budget amendment that was presented to you and approved tonight. So this also looks at, I added three layers here. So we have the second calculation, that was your beginning budget. Your fourth calculation, that was through April. And then the conference report that we're basing these preliminary numbers. And I'm saying preliminary numbers. Again, this is just their view, and it's going to change because they have to recalculate. There's still FTE, minor FTE shifts that would occur too throughout the state. And then they'll true up all the numbers when we receive the second FFP calculation for this upcoming year in July. So going through this report here real quick, I kind of, I'm not a big fan of using color coding, but in this case, I thought it was very relevant. If you look at rolls thirty-four through thirty-eight, those are the ones that I talked about that collapsed in next year's FFP calculation. So you can see they're currently allocated in this year, but then they collapsed and they moved into your BSA. So that amounted to thirty-one point four million dollars or four hundred and forty-two dollars per weighted FTE. Okay, that's going to be an important number I'm going to refer back to. Let's see here, there was significant, let's go back one page. Yeah, I just want to point out too, there was in the yellow there, there was some significant increases there. Really, in the Safe Schools Allocation, we saw some increases in the Mental Health Allocation. That tells us how the state is thinking as they pass on the funds to us. On the next page here is, we're just looking at, I color-coded and put some references on the bottom for you, for your review. But I like to call this session Fun Facts. Okay, I like to try to keep this and look at the budget from their view or just, I need to point out the facts from what's actually being presented. So as I shared with you, row eighteen, I briefly talked about it. And that's going back, that's your base student allocation. As you can see, we received five thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents as compared to the current year, and that was a substantial increase. If you take a look at that, shows five hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. But the programs that I just explained actually rolled into the BSA, increasing that BSA amount. So of that increase, if you back, take that into consideration in that increase that rolled there into next year, we only received an additional two point four percent increase in our BSA. Did that make sense? Do I need to explain that a little bit clearer? Okay, okay, let me do that again. Okay, so going back to rolls thirty-four through thirty-eight, those for your instructional materials, teacher classroom supply assistance, reading, funding compression, and teacher salary increase growth, that amounted to thirty-one point four million or four hundred and forty-two dollars per weighted full-time equivalent. Those now collapsed and moved all into the BSA for this next year. So if you look at that increase again that they gave us in funding, of that, four hundred and forty-two dollars is included in that BSA increase. So the amount that actually was provided for an increase, so I'm going to, let me state it this way. So if you take the five thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents, you back out the four hundred and forty-two dollars, that leaves you four thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. So that's really kind of your true comparison if you're just looking at the BSA to BSA. So of that four hundred and forty-two, that accounts for nine point six percent of the actual increase. The other two point four percent increase roughly is just a hundred and ten dollars and thirty-three cents. Did that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So, so the, for example, the teacher classroom supply assistance, that is a line item under the BSA now?
That actually, yes, okay, so it collapsed and rolled into the BSA. And then for next year on the BSA, per, per our legis, this legislative, legislative session that just closed, they now said any increases that you receive on the BSA, one point four one percent of that has to be carved out for the new teacher salary increase program. It's the same program, but how they come about that is based off of the increase you receive in your BSA. So that increase that we received, they carved out one point four one percent, and that's now set aside for teacher salary increases for this next year.
So now that we have set aside historic funding towards public education in the state of Florida, how much did the base student allocation really go up per student?
What, what it really went up was about two, two point four percent or a hundred and ten dollars, roughly.
Historic, yes.
So, you know.
We'll take it, I was, you know.
Oh, no, no, this is.
You know, I was happy to hear we got five extra dollars, and so that exceeds my expectation.
It's better than the year when we got, what, was it forty-seven or forty-nine cents?
Yeah, something like that.
Forty-seven dollars, I thought it was.
So, so how much, so how much, so you said there's a percentage that has to be allocated towards, what was that, one point something percent?
Yeah, it's one point four one percent of the total increase in your BSA funding now has to be carved out and now goes, it has to be used for the teacher salary increase allocation.
So one point one four one percent.
One point four one percent.
Of a hundred and ten dollars.
No, of the, of the total.
Of the total, so fifty bucks have to go towards teacher raises. I'm not a mathematician.
No, what they did is the teacher salary was in a separate pot.
It was the TSA.
Yes, and it was in a separate pot ever since they started the whole thing about raising the base salary. It was in a separate pot. They took that pot this year and just pushed it into the BSA and said, now you have to take it out of the base student allocation. So it's not in a separate pot, but it still has the same rules for the amount that we have to give out for salary. Now, here's, here's one positive, okay? When that whole thing started, they wanted to do one hundred percent, remember, for new, like the beginning teachers. And then they did an eighty-twenty split with eighty percent going to the, you know, newer teachers and only twenty percent going to the experienced. Then we trusted them that if we got to the forty-seven, five, they were going to give us the choice to then deal with the compression. Well, no, then they came back and did a fifty-fifty split and said, whatever you're going to do to handle the compression piece, fifty percent of that now still has to go to the bottom. So we, we started at thirty-nine, two, and we are now at forty?
Yeah, we're at, right now, we are at forty-eight, one oh three.
So thirty-nine, two to forty-eight, one oh three. But my understanding is, and I want to make sure we're clear, they took the rules off the table. Like, we, there's no longer an eighty-twenty or a fifty-fifty, but instead of leaving it as a separate pot, they now pushed it into the base student allocation.
It's, it's really the same program. How they arrived at the amount of money that has to be set aside for it, that's the only thing that really changed.
Right.
So, and there was reasons for it because.
They were trying to, when we were in Tallahassee, what they were trying to say is we're trying to make this simpler by collapsing category and.
It, it, and it also affected scholarship funding. So for the scholarship program, how they were doing the calculations, this helped put more transparency on how they are funding for scholarship programs. And it cleaned it up a little bit on, on how they come up with the amount that they provide for scholarships, sorry.
So are we still the pass-through for all the charter schools and all the Scott Hope Scholarship and all that?
No, just to charter schools, just to charter schools. And I'm going to be explaining that in this next section, how we're accounting for it.
The pot of money we receive, we still have to carve out the piece for charter schools.
Yeah, we just, yeah, correct, they have their share of the unweighted FTE, and I'll show that. Actually, let's, what page there, that's perfect.
Is the teacher, is the teacher classroom supply assistance, is that fully funded? In other words, are they going to, so now you eliminate the line item and you put it in the big pot. And I think teachers get what? I don't know, was it two hundred dollars or something like that? Is that that money that we're talking about?
Oh, your teacher, the teacher supply card program.
Right.
Yeah, that, that status in place. So even though they collapsed it, I still have to account for it. So we are continuing that program for this upcoming year. They just expanded it to adding more teacher groups that can participate now.
Do they add more money to that because we're expanding it?
No, we, we kind of allocate the funds. I'm still waiting for further guidance from the Department of Education, which is forthcoming. I haven't received that yet, but we did carve out and put money aside for the teacher supply card, sorry, based on the current allocation we did this year.
So, wait a minute, I want to, so in the past, there's been restrictions on that. It's been like they have to be a classroom teacher with a class roster, which then was leaving out like our media specialist and our intervention teachers and people like that. So are you saying that that restriction, like, okay, they collapsed the category and they put it in with the BSA?
Correct.
But we now have some leeway to expand it to include, like even an ESE resource teacher and things like that, yes?
Yes, if you have instructional, if you, if you're a direct instructional unit, if you have any students assigned to you, yes, you would, you would be most, I want to make sure I say this correctly, because I don't have the guidance in front of me. But basically, if you have any direct, or if you have any students that you're teaching, you will be allocated or you could be entitled to receive the teacher supply card program funds. But it's based off a prorated amount. So if you're a halftime teacher, you only receive half, you know, half the amount. And that's basically how.
Because, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but like when we come back, because we're going to be coming back and talking about budget in July and August and even for the special meeting in September, at some point, could you like just clarify that for us?
I will.
Because I think that that, because there have been groups of people that have been left out. And I understand some may still be left out, but if we're making progress at starting to include some of them that we know are spending money because of the way they're working with students, I'd like to just know.
It really is a great program, and I'm glad to see that they're taking initiative to try to expand and add some more teacher groups to it as well, so.
Thank you.
We're just waiting for a little bit more.
No, there's still rulemaking going on for some of this.
Guidance from Department of Education, so. The other fun fact is I want to talk about purchasing power just for a little bit, okay? I'm just going to front-load this and I'll bring it back to you in one of my fancy little slides I create for you during a tentative workshop here. But for the purchasing power, just to let you know, and I'm basing this just based off of the BSA allocation that they provide us each year. In the twenty twenty-one calendar year, we ended the year with a consumer price index that the price of goods and services went up seven percent, okay? Price of goods and services went up again in calendar year twenty twenty-two by six point five percent. But in the twenty twenty-two school year, which is your, based off your budget, the Consumer Price Index, index is used as an indicator on how much legislature really need to fund schools in the next year to kind of keep up with, so you don't lose purchasing power. They, they give us an increase of four point nine percent. So we lost purchasing power. So it's, it's costing us more and we have less, okay? And that's about three point one percent. Just, these are fun facts for.
That's not a fun one.
Not a fun fact.
Did you deduct that from the hundred and ten?
It's an honest fact, but it's not a fun fact.
And then for this, this, this current, this current upcoming budget year, we lost another four point one percent purchasing power, okay? So realistically, to keep up, you know, we should be at least receiving, BSA should be kind of tied in with your Consumer Price Index. So we keep up with the, the cost of goods and services and for salaries and benefits too.
Maybe, maybe we need legislators that have financial backgrounds, just a thought.
I think, I think you would be amazing in that area.
Well, he gave it right back to you.
I was trying to give it to him.
Okay, so, and as you know, the, they eliminated the DCD. I mean, that was a windfall for this district, but it was a one-time windfall, okay? So going forward.
It doesn't make up for all the millions we lost.
Yes.
But look, we're sending a dollar up and we're getting a dollar back.
So that, that was the most exciting thing that came out of this legislative process. I can't really thank our legislature enough for really kind of chewing that up and eliminating it. It just caused so much frustration for all school districts across the state that we're receiving.
Let your people know, Jamie, we said thank you.
I mean.
We said thank you.
But I look back to, you know, we went, Carl was around, we went through a lawsuit and even lost it. Yeah, but I look back to, you know, we went, Carl was around, we went through a lawsuit and even lost it trying to get that back. And granted, we can't return to all the millions we lost, but at least moving forward, we're not losing any more pennies.
I think we should send Senator Wright and our legislation a thank you letter for that one, because that's a plus. And we've been fighting for that one for a while.
Hundred million dollars, I would think, plus. I'm gonna, and, and in closing, really, I'm going to take you back just two pages here, um, and on. On page fifteen of thirty two of your, of your booklet here, on the very top, and this, this is one thing I should have touched on right away as I was going through this. And, um, Mr. Cologne, you asked about this, is that, you know, the traditional, including your virtual, as you can see, if you look on row one going across, we are projecting just a flat growth there. We're projecting that we're going to receive eleven point seven seven unweighted F T E more than we did in the current year. So, everything's kind of staying status quo here. Charter schools are going to actually, even though it shows a decline, they're actually going to be increased. The problem with this number here is this is based off a D O E, um, um, D O E, um, proposed amount or in, um, I'm sorry, um, that.
The D O E F T E.
Yeah, the D O E forecast, thank you, Melissa. The D O E forecast provided that number for charter schools. It's a li, it came in a little bit lower than our fourth calculation, as you can see, so it's showing a reduction. But we know for the next year, when we make the adjustment, was, we'll see a slight increase. That will be taken and offset against the undistributed in row four. Does that make sense? So, right now, I carved out five hundred and eight unweighted F T E because I don't know where they're going to end up. I don't know if they're going to end up in the scholarship programs, in the charter school, or even in our own traditional program. We're, we're going to continue to grow there a little bit. So, that's a placeholder and I have to take all of that money that that five hundred and eight students is generating and I have to put it aside because I don't know where those students are going to end up. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so on that, scholarship programs are taken right off the top. All of that money, all that F T E generates the money, the Department of Education takes that off the top. We never see the money, okay? I have to show it though in the F E F P calculations because that's how they share with us. The charter schools is a pass through where the money comes to us and then we pass it on to. So, now then, I'm going to switch to the revenue section. The revenue section actually directly ties in with your F E F P programs I just shared on the prior page. So, for the second calc, that's where we were as of September, when we had the final budget hearing there. This is the amount of revenues that was actually recorded in your, um, um, your budget. In there, you had family empowerment scholarship program. If you notice, I have that as highlighted yellow. There's two ways of accounting for the scholarship program that's, that D O E provides guidance. I've always removed the revenue because D O E, we never see the revenue, so why would we actually show the revenue? So, but, and then we appropriated it. So, what happens, it overstates your appropriations when you don't really need to. So, if I just re, take out the revenues, I didn't, I don't have to have appropriation for the scholarship program. Is that making sense a little more detail?
Because it never hits the staff coffers.
So, that, so and everyone's seeing this, the public's seeing this and, um, they're going, well, you have all this appropriation for all this and, and it doesn't relate to us. So, I got rid of it. So, that's why I had that highlighted yellow, made a notation there. So, I made that adjustment in the fourth calculation in the conference report and made the adjustment there. That's what the Department of Education is actually, in their conference report, is telling me to reduce my revenues by, okay? So, this is just a detailed revenue sheet. That conference report now, again, it's preliminary numbers, is rolling through to the financial report I'm going to talk about next. And this is just for your general operating fund. So, again, I want to, I want to make sure everyone knows this, okay? Is that when you do a preliminary budget, it's always, it's always based off of your April, where you're ending for your budget adjustments in April. We know we still have May budget adjustments and June budget adjustments and there's a lot of moving parts. So, your preliminary budget is always based off your April thirtieth, twenty twenty three budget amendments and you just received those tonight and approved those, okay? So, that number, um, um, is most likely going to change when we close out the year. That's just our starting point. Included, and included in that number two is one point seven million of non-spendable, okay? Just wanted to share that with you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, if that's okay. So, we have total salaries seventy six point one, but then there's a line for teacher salary, a separate line for teacher salary allocation, the T S I A. Wouldn't that be part of the row ten?
Correct, but you're getting ahead of me, Mr. Cologne.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I've actually looked at this.
Oh, that's, that's absolutely wonderful here. I just wanted to share the, your estimated revenues are coming in from really the other page. There are detail revenues that then we're bringing in now, the transfers from the other page and sell equipment. And a hundred percent correct. Row ten, I, what I'm doing here is I'm showing row eleven, the teacher salary increase allocation. That's the additional money that we had to carve out in our BSA and put aside for teacher salary increases for, increases for this year. So, yes, should that be rolled up into ten? Correct. You can do it, show it either way, but I really wanted to break it out to show that that is part of your, um, um, salary enhancement package that the teachers, that the legislature really carved out for the teachers to receive this year, okay? So, if you add those two together, and another misleading thing about this report and, um, um, is the charter school and undistributed that inflates our appropriations. We have no control over that. If you take that twenty nine point five million dollars and you back, and you reduce your total current reoccurring appropriations that you see down below there, the fifty six, five, five million, six hundred, five hundred sixty three million point nine, thank you. And you reduce that by the twenty twenty nine there, it's roughly, um, five hundred and thirty four point five million. So, that's your true for your, um, traditional and virtual program, um, reoccurring appropriations, okay? So, if you applied then, you add rows ten and eleven together, that really, that constitutes not just seventy six point one percent plus the point eight, it's really eighty one point one percent of your total budget. Now, I'm being honest with you, that's a little high and makes, it makes always a CFO a little bit nervous when you see that your total salaries and benefits is really over eighty percent. You would like to see that number a little bit lower. But that's the true percentage there. Unfortunately, the, because I have to show the charter schools and undistributed on that role, on row eighteen, that increases your appropriations. Did that make sense?
So, this is as of April thirtieth and so you're showing a fund balance of eight point nine percent.
Correct.
But that doesn't include summer programs, that doesn't include May.
Or June.
June.
Wait, no, okay, so let me, let me, let me make sure I clarify this, okay? That, that is your fund balance as of April. I, 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 and I, Mr. Cologne, you're, I hopefully, um, you appreciate this. You wanted to see a true balanced budget where your revenues equal your appropriations. On the preliminary budget, it's a little bit easier to do because we want to show that this is the amount of revenue that the state's providing for public education for Volusia and this is the amount of appropriations that we currently have. Are we truly balanced just with those revenues? And that's what we're showing here. So, when you're talking about fund balance, okay? Fund balance is just your savings account and I want to break it down to just the, you all know this, but sometimes the public doesn't. If you think about, we all get a, we all get a check, um, it can be twice a month or every two weeks. You know, that's the amount that we plan, that we have available then to pay for our normal household expenses like electricity. You have insurance, you know, we have to make sure there's food on the table. Those are reoccurring expenses that you have. So, what we have and what I'm presenting here to you is a reoccurring operating budget, okay? So, it's saying this is going to be your reoccurring revenues going forward and these are your reoccurring appropriations down below. Now, this does not account for ESER positions that most likely will end back, end up back in your general fund. Does that make sense?
No.
Okay, so, so.
So, this doesn't include, so this is just state funding. This isn't the federal funding that we're using to fund some of the other positions, ESER, what we affectionately call them ESER positions that are being funded and that funding, I almost sound, this is the first year I've had so many questions about the budget. So, this is.
A little knowledge is a dangerous thing.
And so, that money's going away after next school year.
That's correct, that's correct. And at the end of the, um, this, um, at the end of this upcoming school year, we, we will no longer have any ESER funds. We'll still have your normal title, I D A programs, but we won't have that ESER. And right now, we have reoccurring, uh, um, operating expenses that, um, it was very strategic how it was done and it was brilliant how it was done. I'm just being honest with you because as we know, the state wasn't providing enough funding. We were losing, um, personnel. We wanted to make sure we gave enough raise, increase, so we could retain those highly effective, um, um, teachers. So, we, we were able to use ESER to do that. But now it's, at, at the end, it kind of bites us a little bit. So, we have to now get those positions back into the general fund. And you're right, they're sitting in another fund that's not shown to you tonight in this preliminary budget presentation.
Gotcha.
I want to back up for a minute. So, if I heard you correctly, under the total salaries and benefits, which was seventy six point one percent, and then the teacher salary increase, increase allocation, which is a point eight percent, and then the charter schools and undistributed, which is a five point two. If we put those together, that's actually what we're spending, what we're projecting to spend on salary and benefits, correct? Those three line items.
I'm going to say, yeah, and I'm going to repeat what you said in just a little different way. If I take the total appropriations of row twenty eight, I minus row, um, eighteen, that's your true appropriations for the traditional and virtual program.
Right.
Now, if you add rows ten and eleven together, then you, you take that and you divide it by your total appropriations, it's eighty one point one percent. Did that make sense? Because the ten, row ten and eleven is for your traditional and virtual program positions.
Okay, and we, you know, I was the proponent of no reoccurring cost coming out of ESER and I understand what happened. I don't have to agree with it. But pretty much the reoccurring cost in ESER are people.
Correct.
And it's approximately how many million?
Well, right now, I don't, the, I'm going to give you a rough number because we know that the F R S rate increased on us two by one point six six percent. Remember, I told you your BSA was two point four percent increase and your F R S rate went up by one point six six. That was a fun fact, by the way, sorry.
Is that, is that subtracted from the hundred and ten dollars?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry to say. So, um, to, so to, to answer your question, it's, last time I looked at it and not, and not factoring that in, is about forty six million dollars roughly that's sitting in ESER from the last.
That's reoccurring.
Yes, that's currently reoccurring, correct. But that's where I was going with this board is because that's that fund balance down below. So, we have, if you look at your fund balance down below, and this is just again based off your April thirtieth, and that's, it is going to change. There's some moving parts going on. Of that total forty seven point three, one point seven of it right now is just a projected non-spending. So, you might as well just take that off because that's your inventories that you have on hand, okay? Excuse me. The remaining amount of that, or if you just look at it, roughly about twenty six point seven percent is a five percent fund balance reserve right now. That leaves us a little bit of wiggle room now here to help us with that ESER issue that we're trying to work on. So, we, I feel pretty comfortable with this. If we actually end the year like this, we can assign that fund balance to make sure so when those ESER positions come back or we can start making some of those adjustments now to, to move them in. Again, remember, these are preliminary, I'm still working through that. But if we do, again, that now will show us as, yes, you have a balanced budget when you use fund balance to offset to, if you don't, if you have insufficient revenues and your appropriations are higher than your revenues, you can use fund balance, but that's non-reoccurring. It's like a one time thing. So, you run into a problem again, then you, you don't have enough revenues coming in to offset the reoccurring. But you always want to make sure you monitor that fund balance. I always felt a five percent is actually pretty healthy fund balance. I like that number. Um, and we're trying to make sure that we adhere to that when we're working through our corrective action plan and especially dealing with those ESER positions that, um, you were alluding to, Mr. Cologne, that also, um, that are accounted for in a different fund that's going to come back into the general operating fund. Did that make sense?
So, Madam Chair, all in all, will we have a balanced budget next year?
For the fiscal year twenty twenty four, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
No more questions. That was good.
Okay, so, Dr. Bachman and I received an email because it was sent out to all superintendents and school board chairs. I don't know if it's been forwarded to the rest of you. Um, if she's not forwarded it, I could forward it to Mr. Wolf and he could forward it on so that you all have the same email that we received. But it came out from Suzanne Pridgen and because we're talking money and we're talking what our responsibility is. Last year, um, Dr. Bachman got called to have to speak in front of D O E because we had not given out our T S I A money to our teacher salary. So, we've already received an email and it quotes the Florida statute, section one zero one one point six two fourteen, section C, that each school district in Florida has to submit a school board approved salary distribution plan to the Florida Department of Education by October first of each fiscal year. And we were one of the one districts that did not make the deadline last year and got called to D O E. Well, if we don't make the deadline this year, they're not only calling her to D O E, they're calling me to D O E. And, yeah, and I have said this for, ever since I got on the board. Thirty six years is what I've completed and I lived through a time period where when we returned to school, we went ahead and got our raises. The latest for years that anybody ever got their raise was maybe right before the winter break, you know, the holidays. But we seem to have fallen into a pattern here where we're not getting our raises to people till March, April, May, June. I'm stating this once again. We have a law to follow. We know what the amount of money is. And I quite frankly, don't want to report to D O E and stand in front of D O E when we already know this money, what the amount is and who it's going to. And they've lifted the restrictions off of it this year. So, Dr. Bachman, I'd like to meet the deadline this year if at all possible and I'd like for this email to be shared with all board members and you can, your cabinet, if you feel that you need to or whoever. Because that's not where I want to be. I, I want people to have their money and I don't understand why we can't go ahead and get them their money. They shouldn't have to wait, you know, you just shouldn't have to wait till April to get your money that you've already worked for. I understand we may have to, which we've had to do that in the past, go back and, and retro summer programs, you know, because you're waiting, depending on when summer programs start and you're waiting for the money to come because they don't give it to us all, you know, there's drop down increments and they don't give it to us all up, up front. But I'd like to move forward with this because it's spelled out here clearly how much that we're getting. But I'd like to move forward with this because it's spelled out here clearly how much that we're getting, at least in that area. So I just wanted everybody to be made aware of that because that is not the place where I would like to be called to after October first.
Note it.
Chair, may I add, I did receive that email as well. I sent it to, to our cabinet and Todd. If you don't mind sending it to the rest of the board.
By the way, I'll just send it to everyone.
Yes, you can just forward it.
I can forward it, okay.
And to your point about returning to DOE, I can promise you that DOE does not want to see Volusia again for a second time for being not, not complying. So I'm in full agreement.
Are bargaining. Have we set dates for bargaining yet?
Um.
I know it's a separate question based on that.
Mr. West?
Do we have bargaining dates yet?
Come over here and speak so that you can be heard.
No, we don't have bargaining dates because, as you know, we had an executive session today, and we need to discuss that before we actually invite. So we will be sending out invitations for bargaining dates starting tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. I have forwarded the email, and I put you on.
Oh, thank you.
So that you saw.
So there can't be any communication back?
Right. All I did was forward it.
I'm going to just quickly wrap it up for you, for you, board. Um, in the rest, in the rest of the book, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call on this. But really, in the rest of the book, you have your debt service funds. I showed a, a five-year, um, forecast for the debt service funds, and then that's followed then by your capital, um, five-year fiscal forecast. And based off of the conference report, tax roll information that was provided, again, the revenue's going to change now a little bit. The certification of tax, taxable, taxable values will.
The school taxable values will change, and we'll get the second calc in July. Once we get that, everything should be finalized, and we can update the five-year plan.
Any questions for, um, and by the way, I have to commend Ms. Brown for her willingness to entertain me, you know, in this first year of, um, learning everything, re-engineering processes she's done in the past, maybe a little bit differently. And she just smiles and she just makes it happen for us. So I really have to thank Ms. Brown and her team.
We, we thank you also, and I will say it's, um, it's very clear. I, I mean, it's easy to understand it, be able to ask questions. I do want to remind all of the board members, um, and I know this is in September, but I, you know, I know sometimes things come up, but, and we're not used to looking at a Thursday, okay? But we planned ahead, and we do have a special board meeting on Thursday, September seventh, twenty twenty-three, and that's here in the boardroom, and that is specifically set aside for the budget piece in order to meet the deadline, to have the final piece of what we have to submit into the state. Because we could not, um, we would not meet the deadline to have it there if we waited till the September twelfth meeting. And because of the timeframe in which it comes, we couldn't do it on the August twenty-second. So I know that lots of times, because that ties into the Labor Day weekend, well, like the labor, you know, happens, but some of you make other plans. I just didn't want you, I'm, I'm saying now, remember that on Thursday, September seventh, we do have a meeting, and that is the only topic. It is the budget piece so that we can make the deadline for that.
So we're still having a meeting on the twelfth?
Yeah, we still have our regularly scheduled meetings, but based on when they, we, we added this, and we added it originally, I mean, it's been there for a while. I just know that sometimes we don't look on Thursdays. And I, I'm giving everybody fair notice that if you're planning to be out of town or something for the Labor Day weekend, just be back in time for that meeting on Thursday. Um, we did back it up a little. It's not starting until five-thirty, but that was, you know, we specifically did it because it's when they get the information and what they have to do in order to turn it around on time.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions about the budget? Or what's been explained so far?
We can always ask you individually if we have our questions, right?
Yeah. And we do appreciate that you answer our questions and, and, um, you know, give us information or take time to explain things. We do appreciate that. Thank you.
Good job.
Dr. Bachman, did you have something you wanted to add?
No, thank you, Mr. Sees, and to you and your entire team. I know you guys put in a lot of hours with this report, and it's, it's very clear succinct. And I think the reason, one of the reasons why Mr. Cologne asked so many questions is because it's clearly laid out for you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're moving right along, and we are now up to item eighteen point zero one, which is our only item to, um, that is a standalone item to vote on this evening. So we were all just recently at the Florida School Board Association, um, meeting in Tampa. And some of the positions you can just volunteer for. Um, we all received an email from the Florida School Board Association saying, if you want to volunteer for this committee or this subcommittee, please submit your name. And by the way, if you did volunteer for any of them, or you took on, um, chairing one of the committees or, um, being the alternate, um, would you please give that information to Celeste and Karen so that they can keep our sheet updated so we know who's on what committees? But, um, there is one other position that we have to actually have as a board action item, and we have to vote on. And that is for the advocacy committee representative and an alternate for the advocacy committee. So I will tell you, the advocacy, advocacy committee typically does, um, a virtual, like, team meeting on Fridays. Um, it's usually when they meet. And so I just need to know, um, if someone would like to step up and be on the advocacy.
Could you tell us, Madam Chair, what, what that committee does? Their purposes?
I've been doing it. But I, but I think Mr. Persis wanted to do it because somehow we had his name down. On a list.
I'm, I'm just asking what it, what it is.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Persis.
As you advocate, do you advocate for FSBA, or do you advocate for, um, school boards?
Public education.
It's public education. So like Kima Montri and different people have chaired it, where they've come up with like, what, what's our platform and what are we advocating for as a group?
For public education?
Yes, for public education. They usually, whoever chairs it, um, does a report to the board of directors piece about what's coming up. We use, sometimes we vote on pieces of it in the general meeting. You know, what?
Okay.
The stance is going to be.
Who they're advocating for.
So, um.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that Carl Persis be our advocate for the advocacy committee on FSBA.
Our representative.
I second.
Do I have to give a campaign speech or anything like that?
You're spared that, we're spared that.
Thank you.
All right.
And, and who's that, well, fine.
Okay.
Who's the alternate?
Well, wait, we have to vote on this. So all those in favor of Mr. Persis being our representative for the advocacy committee for the Florida School Board Association, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. So you are going to do that, and so we will submit your name, and then you'll start getting emails and the link for the virtual meetings, which that's what's nice. At least we don't have to travel around the state now to do these. We can do these virtually. But we need an alternate in the event that he is not available for one of the meetings, um, to attend that, someone that, don't look at me. I've already got quite a few things on my plate. I, I stayed on the board of directors, okay?
That's true.
And I'm your alternate for that.
And you're my alternate. So I need someone to be.
That leaves Jesse or Ruben.
Nominate Ruben.
It's only fair.
It's only fair. Okay. So Ms. Thompson has nominated Mr. Cologne. Do I have a second?
Be happy to second that.
I'm sure you are. Mr. Persis is happy to second. Any further discussion? Okay, then we will call for a vote. All those in favor of Mr. Cologne being the alternate for the advocacy committee for the FSBA, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
He opposes it himself. All right, but really, if you did volunteer though, to be on any of the, because aren't you heading, you're, I thought you're on a, you took on something this year.
You were, you were, yes, you were on, um, the nominating committee? On the nominating committee?
You were on something.
Yeah.
No, but there's something, there's something new that they named you for this year. He was on the nominating committee the year before.
Oh.
He couldn't be on it a second time.
Education, something.
Yeah, but there are committees, and they did send out an email. Um, if you have lost the email, if you just reach out, I will forward you the email, and you can choose, because they've got finance and policy. There's just all kinds of committees and subcommittees, and they do want, um, our support. And just as a reminder, we have, um, master board training coming up on September twenty-six to, um, since we had changes in the board in order to earn back our master board certification. And, um, and.
One at twelve thirty?
Yes. And, and we just did receive word, which is very exciting, that Mrs. Burnett has completed all of the credit needed to now become a certified school board member. So she, soon she's going to be getting her plaque and everything, and at that point, I think we'll bring it in and make it official. Because she did all of the work in order to earn that. I will tell you, if you, um, if you haven't done it yet, yes, it's, it's a lot of work to get there. But once you get there, it becomes a lot easier to keep it, okay? So I'm hap, I'm happy that I'm on that side of it. And I told her, I said, you, you've got it there now. It will be much easier to keep it, so, but congratulations. So, any public participation, Mr. Gomez? All right, then we're moving on to the end of the meeting. Do we have any comments, items that need to be discussed by any board members, the board attorney, or the superintendent?
Uh, madam.
Yes, Mr. Persis.
I had, uh, sent an email to, uh, Dr. Bachman and to you about the possibility of scheduling a, um, a topic for discussion at our next workshop concerning vaping, and, uh, perhaps getting the involvement of the, um, young people from SWAT as well as law enforcement, as well as our district, um, staff. Just give us a, a joint presentation about what the trends are, and particularly what the trends are right here in Volusia County. It was, uh, I have met with the SWAT group a couple of times, and it's eye-opening. I mean, it's eye-opening. And I, I want us to get on the, I want us to be implementing the right strategies to cur, to curtail the vaping participation use that we are seeing. And, Madam Chair, as you know, we have reports of it now, even, even a first grader.
Oh, my gosh.
Coming in with, um, vaping products. So it's not going away, and we have to do something differently. So that's why I asked if that would be okay. Maybe twenty, twenty minutes, and then we could ask questions for ten, some, something like that.
Yeah, and I got it, and you saw that I asked them to add it, because I agree with you. You know, it can do so much more damage even than what the smoking piece did. And, and it's flavored, you know, and this is what I'm hearing from people. And I, I just, I just can't even believe that anyone would put it in the hands of a child.
I know.
Okay, I, I mean, and. Oh, yeah. A first grader's not walking into a store and buying, you know, a vape that looks like a, which, you know, they're looking like highlighters and everything else now, or cute little characters in watermelon flavor. I, I mean.
Bad.
It's bad. It's bad, and we're going to have, not only is it an addictive thing, but, you know, it's very dangerous. We've already, you know, you already start reading about children that have lost their life or their lungs have been so damaged that, you know, they need to be on a transplant list or whatever. Um, this, this is not a game. And, and it's no different than what even, uh, Ms. Roland and Mr. Penders' group presented at a DAC meeting about the CBD oil showing up on Oreos and Tockys and Skittles and Gummy Bears. I, I just don't understand. I, I don't understand, um, how we've reached this point that we've got kids having access to this. And, um.
Thank you.
You're right, we've got to do something.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I agree.
So it will be coming up on a workshop, and, um, we'll hear what else, what, what else can we do? I mean, I think we may have to throw the book at a few people, and there may have to be some tough consequences.
I don't know.
So, but I'm, I'm open to hearing. Anything else, Mr. Cologne?
Yeah, so I was excited to look at the budget, and I'm not sure how this got there, but it's okay. I agree with it, and it's the, I see there's a master plan for Enterprise Elementary, and I don't know that we've ever formally approved that. So does that come back to us later? Like, I know we've spoken about it, but, um, I see it's in the budget, and if that's the case, then, um, then I think at that point, we could, uh, notify the community that it's in the works, because it was a renovation initially, but I don't remember us ever voting or agreeing.
No, it will come back.
It will come back, okay.
So that brings up a question I have. Have we received back any of the reports that have been done on some of these schools? Okay. So we're waiting on McGinnis and Enterprise at this point, okay? Are there any other schools that any of the board members are very concerned about? Because keep in mind, you know, we brought up Terry T., we brought up Stark. They did it on Orange City, so, um, we have, we know McGinnis and Enterprise we're waiting on, so.
The elephant.
Huh?
The elephant in the room.
Yeah.
Bruce Creek, yeah. Okay, so can I, I want to share, I really want to share. Get up here, Dr. Johnson. I'm going to put you on the spot.
Oh, boy.
I want to share this because it'll only take a few minutes. No, don't. A week ago, last week on Monday, I got in a truck with Dr. Johnson, Tom Brown, and Ron Young. Notice, I got in a truck. And I took a trip to Polk County, to Haynes City, to an area where they're developing, you know, because everybody's growing and people are moving in and everything. And we went and toured, um, K-eight model, and I, I'm not, it, that wasn't the point, do you know what I'm saying? But it's one thousand six hundred and two student stations, built on seventeen acres, with a one and a half mile parent pickup and drop-off loop on the seventeen acres, like, not outside of the seventeen acres, along with, um, a lane for emergency vehicles to be able to get back to where the gym is. It was built, the school is built in the shape of a U. And they told us, like, they have standard models, but they told us what, they modified slightly for this based on feedback from previous ones being opened in that area, is the, you know, you have the front office there, like, kind of in the center part of the U facing, um, the bus loop, which the bus loop can stack thirty buses with five of them at a time being loaded undercover, like, so kids would not be in the rain on it. But right, um, beyond the front office, you have an entrance on the left for the middle school kids. You have an entrance on the right for the elementary, because the one thing they wanted was. Because the one thing they wanted was there are joint areas they would use, but they really wouldn't be crossing paths. It's only two stories, okay? So, it's not like some three or four story piece, it's two stories. And on the front ends of the building where the U starts to go up, they put the middle school art room and the elementary art room. They did an outdoor art area for both of those, but now it's safe because it's like the wall's there, so like nobody can get in and there will be covering. But like they can do art projects outside. And my first thought was, if you've ever been in an elementary classroom where there's glitter, like that's the perfect place to do the glitter because you can hose it off afterward, you know what I'm saying? But on the middle school side, you know, they had the band room with the separate practice areas. The ESE classrooms had the restrooms built within. But right behind the front office was the media center. And so, the media center has a wall of windows overlooking the courtyard of the U. And the modification they made to the media center was it's going to house 15,000 books because reading is a priority there. And they had their TV production lab, but the cafeteria was on the middle school side on the bottom floor and, and they all laugh at me because like I looked at where's the prep table versus to the stove? What's the dry storage area look like? Where do they pull up to drop everything off? And then the elementary school is on the right-hand side with the younger grades being downstairs and the older grades being upstairs. But beyond, and in the courtyard area, they'll have a covered walkway from the elementary side to come over to the cafeteria, which was for an auditorium thing seated almost 500, okay? But beyond that, they had the slab board for four outdoor basketball courts. They had the full gymnasium that met the high school specifications to play basketball in there with the full bleachers, the locker rooms. On the opposite side though, were the public restroom. So, like when the public's there for an event in the gymnasium, they don't ever have to go into the kids locker rooms. They have a weightlifting room and a dance, they put in a dance area for dance floor. Beyond that, they have two tennis courts, they have a soccer slash football field, and then they have the outdoor playground, okay? They have everything you need on 17 acres with a mile and a half parent pickup, drop-off loop, which...
They do that for 30, 30 million dollars or less?
No, not quite, but because, you know, the price materials. But they even, we even walked the chiller system and they explained how they set it up so that if a piece of it goes down, it's not the whole building going down, it's in quadrants. I, I mean, it's just, it's smart. I mean, like somebody took the time to think about things. And I brought it up and I know I ruffled feathers and I'm like, well, if we had thought about putting a parent pickup, drop-off loop over at Manatee Cove and River Springs on our property, we wouldn't be, and you know, and I'm like, stop blaming Orange City. It's not Orange City, the city's fault that, you know, it's that way. But it was quite a day and it was hot because the air was not scheduled to come on for three more days or whatever. But they call it a turnkey model and from start to finish, it's eight months because they have plans already and they have thought of things that should be thought of. And I will tell you, the primary classrooms had the space that they need. Love George Marx, but you go in George Marx and the bathroom takes up one whole corner in those classrooms. And so, the teacher has to think of how she's going to position herself and she just lost that space. These rooms, you don't lose any space in. The bathroom's there, but the bathroom's built into the wall with the bathroom, you know, the classroom on the other side where it's built to almost like a closet would be. So, you have nice, clean lines.
And how many student stations?
1,602.
And how many student stations do we have at Bruce Creek? How many students are enrolled at Bruce Creek?
Creek High?
About 3,000. But here's what's said to me, and this is where I get frustrated because when they were building University High, Seminole County had this kind of a model where they were building high schools on 40 acres with everything you needed. But no, we had to do it differently. And so, you know, people want to tell me, oh, we need 20 or 25 for an elementary and we need 50 for a middle and we need 100 for a high school. No, we don't. I don't believe in that anymore. I've seen it where we don't have to have that, so I think we need to work smarter. And so, I'm just sharing. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to go see some of their schools now that have been turned over and people have lived in them for a year or two years and hear what they have to say. But it was, it was...
It was great. You get an A+ for that. I could not have done a better job than that.
I think that would require you getting in the truck again.
I know.
And, and we're in the backseat again, but I, I tell you, we, since that visit, we've had a number of conversations with the cabinet, the superintendent. We, we love the concept and so we have been looking into some different options than what we traditionally have done. But we, we love, my team loved the concept, you know, a couple of things with the materials that we can change and improve on, but the concept is great. We loved it.
Yeah. Even the stairways, okay, love University High, but have you guys ever put your foot down on the stairways to walk up the stairs at University High? Your foot will not fit, okay? Because the stairways are narrow. That was, they, they looked at me like, what are you doing? And I'm like, I want to go over and put my foot on the stairway. And they're like, why? I'm like, I need to see if my foot, if I put it there, could plant and...
You ever seen a kid in the candy store? There she is.
That's why we send her.
Yeah. And so, and, and, and so the stairways are wider so that, you know, and that's a safety factor, I truly believe. A kid needs to be able to plant their foot on the stair, not on a portion of it. And we looked at the railing that they're putting on the stairs and they're doing it so that you can have three lanes of traffic on the stairs. I, I mean, they just have thought of things that are smart. So, I wanted to share that with you. And yes, I did sit in the back, although he will, I mean, I'll tell him myself, when we got back in the truck, I said to them, either you turn that air on high or I'm moving up front and I'm driving because it wa, it was hot.
Why did you do that to the chair?
Oh, we cranked it up. It was cool.
Yeah, I was like, I'm going to text Dr. Johnson, I need air. But thank you. But it, it was a good trip and I would like to see a finished school now that somebody's lived in it for a year or two years and hear what's happening. But, you know, with the growth that we have going on, we got to think smarter on some of this, so.
Since Dr. Johnson's sitting there, may I ask a couple of questions?
Sure, go right ahead.
How is the, the piping at Sugar Mill going? And when that's supposed to start?
Yes, it, it is going very well. We, we started, I think, two weeks ago.
Okay.
So, I know they have completed a couple of buildings, so it's going very well.
And then also...
On schedule.
The Port Orange Elementary, how's that one going?
Right now, we have not started the envelope. We're still doing some mitigation work inside with the walls and the intrusion of the water because right now, because of the rain that we've had, we've had some water intrusion. So, we're doing some mitigating work on that. The envelope, we have not started on that and we probably will not be able to start on that project until after school starts. But it will not interfere with the instruction.
They were hoping to get that done over the summer, I think, weren't we?
We all were, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, well, you can't help the rain, but...
Right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Anything else anyone wants to add? All right, then we are adjourned.